It's over on video. And should the video portion go down, or the Zoom portion go down, rather, that we will make every effort to restore it. But if we're unable to, the meeting will continue to proceed live. First up, we have on the agenda, public input, which should be limited to statements from the public pertaining to issues that are under our purview, but which are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the board. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during the public input session?
Does it have to do with Kate Connor?
That's on the agenda, so that's not relevant to this part of the discussion.
Okay.
Nothing on Zoom, Evan, I assume?
No.
Okay. Next up, we have an administrative review of One Woodbine Street, recommendation for approval of a public way.
Good evening, Paul Cohen, Town Manager. Town meeting next month. We have street acceptance for a portion of Woodbine Street, which is shown on your screen there, what we call the extension of Woodbine Street. Just to orient people, if to the far right of that would be the, is the Lowell Line, and obviously the Market Basket Plaza, to give you an idea of sort of what area we are off of, you know, the Chelmsford Street vicinity. This is very similar to what we experienced when we did Parkhurst Road for acceptance, like, you know, what's going on? So basically, same thing happened. Town's out there doing work, drainage and so forth. And as EPW is doing their plans and everything else, this section of Woodbine Street is not legally accepted by the town. So the town is initiating the effort to have it formally accepted. Basically, one, it adds to our Chapter 90 inventory, which then provides funding back from the state, because that's based upon your amount of road miles. So again, the Select Board on Monday evening voted their intent to lay out Woodbine Street. It's now before you for a recommendation. Upon that, the Select Board will do a formal layout, and then Town Meeting will be asked to accept it. Obviously, are no concerns from the neighborhood. Obviously, the neighbors are pleased that the town's out there doing drainage work to improve the drainage in that area of town. So you have the plan and the legal description.
And the Board may remember, the Board was actively involved in Delgarian Terrace and Woodbine Street several years ago, which your decision actually contemplated this action, which is the final action of the, you know, this whole planning board involvement in this project.
Is Delgarian and the other end of Woodbine all public?
Yes.
Accepted? Okay.
For the record, Anita Tanini and Mike Welsh have joined us. So am I to understand that, am I correct, that this portion that's going to be laid out and accepted has been being like plowed and maintained and everything for?
Yeah, for years.
A long time. So it's just like a technicality.
Yeah, and if you recall, like within the last decade, we've come across a number of these roads that were not formally in this. And what's happening is, like we saw with Parkhurst, is the state's being more stringent now, is that when you want to do this, they want the current plan and so forth. And so, yes, the short answer to your question is yes.
And just for clarification, for tonight, what action does the planning board?
Makes a recommendation on whether or not to support the?
The article.
The layout of, yeah, the layout of Woodbine Street, which would then go to the Town Meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone want to have any thoughts they want to discuss?
Perfectly good sense to me.
On the matter, anyone? Okay, take a motion?
Move that we approve acceptance of the portion of Woodbine Street.
As a public way?
As a public way, yes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mike Raisbeck, second by John, and we'll take a vote.
Aye.
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 And I'm an aye, so unanimous. Okay. Next up, we have further revisions to the Chelmsford lighting bylaw. Hopefully Kelly's on the Zoom to, oh, look at that. He's right here in the room, sorry. So as you may recall, we had a previous conversation and vote on the lighting bylaw. And Kelly went back and took our commentary, or some members of the Board's commentary, to heart and did some reworking.
Indeed, and I also spoke to Paul Cohen about this. And so, just to recap, this is to update an existing bylaw that's been on the books for a quarter of a century. That bylaw has some pretty basic tenants about controlling outdoor lighting, essentially above a certain brightness. Every light should be pointed down. That was about the extent of it. And there were some exemptions for emergency vehicle, emergency lighting and such. Since then, the advent of LEDs has made lighting a lot brighter and a lot more obvious. And frankly, there hasn't been much compliance with the existing bylaw that we have over these many years. So I'm, if you want to go to the next one, I'm proposing a, we are proposing a new bylaw that is a little bit more fleshed out in terms of the specifics of what is and isn't allowed. I've been proposing a general bylaw versus an existing one, such that existing non-conforming lighting fixtures would become, covered under that, they would not be grandfathered any longer. There would be a ten-year sunset clause to bring everything into compliance, so it isn't like it would be overnight. It would, in addition, by being a general bylaw, it would allow us to engage and cover both municipal lighting and utility lighting, both of which are important in terms of the lighting footprint, if you will, that we have in town. And it introduces the idea of having a lighting standards officer, who could be in the building commissioner's office, or could be somebody hired on the outside on a case-by-case basis. Next one, please. So what I've done since then is make some, the concerns were twofold from the last meeting, largely around the, not entirely, but largely around the issues of the restrictions that are being put on residential lighting, and how that can be seen as complicated to the homeowner. And secondly, the enforcement mechanism and how the building commissioner is not normally out at night. And so if there were a complaint, my light is shining, my neighbor's light is shining in my yard, or the mall's light is shining in my yard, how to get the compliance done. What I found out from Paul is that that's basically what's going on with the current, the existing bylaw. When somebody comes in with a complaint, the building commissioner does not go out at night. The first line of defense is usually through the police department, a nuisance call. They go out and check it out, try to make an accommodation. And I'm not aware of too many instances where the building commissioner has actually been called in. There've been a couple of cases that I have in 25 years, honestly. I'm not the lighting police, I don't intend to become the lighting police. Probably on one hand, I can count the number of times that I've suggested to the building commissioner that something should be looked at and corrected. And so what I thought I'd do this time is with all, so I went back and made a number of changes to the residential side of this, to remove some restrictions where possible. It turns out that there is a vehicle that the planning board has, and has used in previous bylaws, where you don't actually make a requirement, but you express a preference. The town prefers blank. So it's sort of, it indicates and telegraphs what the preferred standard should be without actually making it a requirement. So this sets up, this is the residential side, the part that had the most changes. The trigger that is, what's covered is the same as the existing bylaw. If you have an individual light, think porch light, that exceeds 1,000 lumens, or if you have a multiple light fixture, think security light that exceeds 2,000 lumens. Those were and would be both covered and required to be fully shielded. Fully shielded, in this sense, means pointing straight down. Doesn't, especially with LEDs, they don't really require shields in order to affect that, because there are panels of lights, and when you point them down, all the light goes down. I had previously indicated some standards for the total amount of light that could be on a residential property, and also the color temperature. Those have been removed as such, but in place, I've put in town preferences for the total lumens and the color temperature. In the past, there was no particular standards for what we might collectively call accent lighting, landscape lighting, facade lighting, the newer string lights. And although we don't have a big problem with that in town now, there are plenty of towns that do have problems with this, and this is kind of anticipating that there might be a problem in the future, even though we might not have one now. And so those are in there, there are lumen limits. And this is for all kinds of lighting, not just the residential, and also a curfew. So it suggests that if you want to light up the side of your building or have string lights, that's okay, but let's have them off between midnight and 6:00 AM. This is, this period, by the way, 12 to 6:00, is consistent with Illuminating Engineering Society guidelines for this particular type of lighting. And then finally, for the business side, so again, that's where most of the changes occurred. Just to recap, the business, commercial, this is a broad, I couldn't fit it all in one line. It's commercial, it's multifamily housing apartments, think apartments, municipal properties, and this would occur to the utilities as well. Again, the standards for what needs to be shielding is unchanged from the previous bylaw. But now we have what would be higher standards for the maximum output of a light in a commercial setting. As you might imagine, LEDs have made it possible to throw incredible amounts of light on the ground, in terms of lumens. I can go down to Home Depot and buy a commercial area light with 5,000 to 10,000 lumens of output for about 150 bucks. And I don't need to be a commercial person in order, I could install that in my backyard if I wanted to. So Evan and I talked about this a little bit. This 20-foot cap is like what you might reasonably put on a two-story building. And although not every place in town, every commercial situation in town is under 20 feet, think tall light poles in a parking lot. If you were to have light poles or something above 20 feet, then at that point, you have to have a lighting plan for those, according to IED specifications. The commercial multifamily municipal side would still have the 2,700 Kelvin color temperature limit, which would keep the lighting warm. And frankly, what this means, and again, I've had multiple discussions with the Business Association. If you have lighting now that is otherwise conforming, but it's 4,000 or even 5,000 Kelvin, not uncommon in town, then over the next 10 years, you would be expected to replace that with something with a warmer color temperature. And because of the lifetime of LEDs, and because a lot of businesses were early adopters of LEDs because of the efficiency involved, you might reasonably expect that within 10 years, those will need to be replaced anyway. Again, the standards for accent lighting, again, not a big problem in town, but you know, Chelmsford has a reputation as a party city, so I'm not surprised that we would have a lot of ancillary light. Certainly, we have facade lighting. Think in the historic district, some of the buildings there have lighting that are, you know, illuminating the steeples or whatever. And those are on all night, as it stands right now. This would basically ask that they be off from midnight to 6:00. And then something that was sort of inherent in the old, the existing bylaw, but we've specified in the new one, and this is our sort of first line of defense, is what is a nuisance? In talking to Paul, you know, the, somebody would be called out to adjudicate a situation if it rose to the level of being a nuisance. And that nuisance was undefined in the previous bylaw. In this one, it would be defined, both in terms of whether it's on all night, and also whether it, whether a certain amount of light goes over the property line. This was kind of discussed last time in terms of the enforcement, how complicated it might be to determine that. I brought with me tonight a professional-grade lighting meter. In any of your hands, you could go outside, there's only one button on this. No dials, no whistles. In less than a minute, you can determine whether any property is in violation or not. That's how easy it is for anyone to do. So I would imagine, for example, a first line of defense might be that the police are called out on a nuisance call, they see that there might be a problem, they call the building commissioner, the building commissioner goes out, makes a quick determination, and that's all you would need in order to determine whether there's compliance or not. So that's sort of the end of it. Those are the sort of changes and scope that I made. I spoke to those, obviously, I was less, I was, how do I want to put this? I was determined to have all of the planning board members support this. And so that's why I've gone back to the drawing board and tried to rework this to appease and accommodate some of the concerns that were expressed, and also with those of Town Manager Cohen. That's about it.
Anyone have any questions for Kelly?
I got one question for Kelly. Kelly, thank you for reaching out to me regarding that, and I hope you did get my response. You did address all of them, except why, my question is on the residential. The average color temperature for average residents is 2,700 to 4,000. Why are you picking the low? And it's the warm light, I understand that, but you're not giving the residents an option. And that's where I was going to die on the hill last week on the last meeting, and you addressed the other items, but I think you've got to give some range to the?
I'm sorry, I thought I removed, that certainly indicated in the preference.
You're still sitting at 2,700.
As a preference.
As a preference, and up to 3,000.
That's a preference.
Up to 3,000.
Right, but I'm not requiring that.
Okay, so you're not requiring it.
Right. Why so low?
No, no, I understand why you want it low, and you don't want the blue, I understand that.
Okay.
I just was, if it's a preference, that's fine. I didn't see the preference part of that in that section.
It's up on the screen.
Is it right in the, where is it?
4.4.
Yeah. Okay, town's preference. That's fine.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Anyone else have a question?
So I raised a few questions to Kelly, and I noticed, Evan, that you also sent it to Town Council, thank you.
It's in your packet.
So I've never been a fan of the preference in bylaws, because it's essentially not really enforceable. And people don't read the bylaws unless they're really looking for enforcement. So I think that's problematic to have in there, but I'm not completely opposed to it. I know Town Council's opinion is a little mixed as well, given his input. But the biggest concern I have is how we're treating single-family different from multifamily. And the reason why I've got concerns about that is because of the new ADU laws. And this was mentioned also by Town Council, that if we're treating ADUs differently for multifamilies than single families, it could be challengeable. And so my concern is that if we're not enforcing this for single families, we cannot enforce them for ADUs in general. But if the ADU's on a multifamily, and it's got some lighting that is out of compliance, but the multifamily has to comply, that's going to create a big problem for enforcement.
Right. And in trying to work the wording for this, I guess my question is, what does the planning board consider multifamily to mean? My intent was to capture apartment complexes, condo complexes, really not just a three-family triple-decker, I don't know, do we even have those here in town? But rather, commercial-scale dwellings. And so, if you accept that, and that's, maybe that's a point for discussion, that's what I was aiming for by using the word multifamily dwelling.
So our definition, I believe, is five units?
Three or more.
Three or more units, yeah.
Okay. So then, I would suggest, if you have a multifamily dwelling on a property, is that the kind of property that is likely to add what would be construed as an ADU? And is that not simply an expansion of the scale of the multifamily dwelling?
So that's something I don't think we know yet. And that's part of my concern, is that if they decide that it, if it meets the definition of an ADU, whether it's detached or, well, my concern is primarily for the attached ADU. We wouldn't be able to necessarily, I don't think, enforce this lighting standard on the ADU.
Right.
But if it's attached to a multifamily, the lighting is going to get really confusing.
Yeah, I agree. And I do think, did not the state issue its ADU guidelines just like within the last week? I mean, I really, I guess it kind of causes me to scratch my head to imagine an apartment complex adding on and then calling that an ADU. Is that even legally possible? I don't know the answer.
I think it is based on our discussions in the ADU discussions. I don't know if it would happen, I don't know when it would happen, and I don't know under what conditions. They're all, it's all new to us, too. But it's, the ADU laws now are something I'm starting to think about as we're looking at our bylaws, about how will any changes that we make in our bylaws impact the ADU law? And how will the ADU law impact these changes? So I don't know, it's just something to think about.
I mean, would there be a way to have the ADU lighting be governed by the lighting parameters for a multifamily, if it was attached to a multifamily? And be guided by the lighting parameters for a single family or a two-family, if it was attached? I mean, I feel like if we get bogged too much down in this, that we're making the perfect be the enemy of the good. If we want to have a lighting policy, we can always come back and revise it if we find that there's little, on the ends of things, areas where there's a problem. But I think to not do it because there might be a problem, we can't imagine it.
I'm not saying not doing it. I'm saying my resolution to that would be to go back to the way it was before, when we're treating all properties, multifamily, single family, the same. And that would be my concern.
The other option is to, in this bylaw, treat an ADU just as you do for single and two-family. It's basically?
But if you've got a walkway between a detached ADU and a multifamily, where does that sit?
It just, it wouldn't be applicable, because it's an ADU. So the bylaw could say, for purposes of this, all ADUs are treated as a single family.
So any property with an ADU on it would be exempt?
If you're concerned about the legal challenge, I think around this table, as we're discussing, the notion that ADUs are going to proliferate existing multifamilies seems more of a legal exercise for the association that may not be very viable.
But that's assuming it's a condo, if it's a rental building?
Yep, yep, but many of those have zoning permits with required open space requirements, parking requirements.
Setbacks.
Setback requirements.
Which are not necessarily applicable in a protected ADU setting.
Understood, understood. So my point is, if your primary concern is a legal challenge due to the ADU law, then this bylaw, the simple solution would just be exempted, like you're doing with single family.
Yeah, the other thing, too, is that, you know, I'm working on the assumption that a multifamily property has already maximized the number of units that it can have on that. But I also take some guidance from something Mike said early on in this, which is, this doesn't need to be on the books for 25 years unchanged, we can come back in five years. For example, coming back in five years halfway through the sunset period would be a reasonable thing to do, to see how well that's happening. That might be the kind of time to make course corrections for things like that. You'll have a much better track record or history with ADUs by that time than you do now, which is zero, right?
Yeah.
Not to diminish your point, which I think is a reasonable one to discuss, but I, you know, I'm just, it's kind of a hypothetical that, in my naive sense, is remote.
Anyone else?
Not a question, but just a comment. Kelly and I spoke, and I just wanted to say thank you for addressing the, you know, making the changes on the, you know, the single and two-family residences.
And I have a few questions. I have a few questions as well.
Sure, go ahead.
The, so, well, we were just talking about the preference that was a restriction on lumens. And so we are not, in this bylaw, doesn't restrict single-family lumens. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, but the trespass is something that will be enforced?
Right, that would come under, that's the sort of fallback position?
Right.
For one neighbor against another. That nuisance has a specificity in terms of how strong the light can be at the property line, which this little puppy would measure.
Right. So, and I'll get to that in just a second. So in the definitions, the light trespass currently reads, "Any light emitted by a luminaire that shines beyond the property on which the luminaire is installed, and increases the illuminance as measured at the lot line and foot candles." So my question was, increases from what? It's a relative statement, but it's not tied to any standard.
In the standard, which is under the nuisance standard, which I'll get to in a second, it's 4.3.1.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, what I was thinking, that you would want to tie the definition instead of saying that it's an increase, but that it's basically exceeding the requirement.
Excessive.
Or just, that it's a trespass when it exceeds the requirement, just like a trespass of property is when you cross the lot line.
Right.
And that, so I wondered if you wanted to, because right now, I think the increases, you know, well, anybody could say, well, hey, now it's more.
So maybe you would say, instead of saying increases the illuminance, you might say exceeds the illuminance requirement?
Yes, that's exactly, that's what I'm looking for, yeah. I think you?
I could certainly take that as a friendly amendment, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah, for that as a friendly amendment, yeah.
Evan, how do we, would we just make that change?
You're going to make the changes, and you're going to be officially presenting them at FinCom tomorrow night.
Okay.
And then that, the version that FinCom ultimately votes on is what should go in there.
Well, they have this version, but I can mention that that change has been made. Thank you.
And then also, in 452, the landscape lighting, where it says to point it towards the feature. And I didn't know whether it would make any sense to add any sort of language about, to avoid pointing it towards public ways or nearby structures or whatever. In other words, trying to avoid the situation where the feature is being lit, it's being lit from the other side of the feature, and your sidewalk or whatever is on the other side. So that's lighting the feature, but it's lighting you at the same time.
Landscape lighting is kind of squishy territory. And I would submit to you that, in that situation, then the nuisance property foot candle limit would capture that.
Yeah, I didn't know if some language to, anybody reading the bylaw would understand that the intent was, I mean, I think you can sort of gather what the intent is, but I didn't know if some additional language, so that people understand, it's not just that we're wanting you to point it at the feature, we're also wanting you to point it in such a way that's not pointed at other people. But it, give or take, I don't, you know, whether you think that's something that can be added there or not. That was my thought, what you said, is that it's, the requirement still captures any sort of problem associated with that.
One of the things, too, Joel, is that landscape lighting is not necessarily strong. Doesn't have to be strong. It can be subtle, it can be ambiance, right? And so in that case, having lighting that's pointed directly at the street, if you're trying to illuminate a fountain or something like that, might not exceed the, these?
Yeah, I'm more thinking of those little floodlights that people like to light up their trees with, and?
Right.
Yeah.
But you agree that the nuisance would capture that?
Yeah, the requirement is there. Yeah, it's, yeah, the requirement is there. So somebody, this is more just a suggestion for somebody who's reading this to go, oh, okay, I understand that you want me to point it at a feature, you don't want, want me to point at other people. But you sort of get that idea from the general bylaw anyway, so I don't think that's necessary. And then also, one question I had was, so does this essentially mean that we're banning, like, flashing stop signs? Stop, you know, the kind of stop signs where they're blinking on the outside?
Right.
Usually 24 hours a day.
Interesting you should bring that up, because I think the town installed one on some, on the corner of somebody's property, and he called me and said, can you do anything about this flashing stop sign? I mean, that's on the public right of way, I would imagine. And that's, that's...
Also not a light.
Right. It's, it's...
Also safety.
Right, it's for safety. I mean, they're, they're, in the sign bylaw, in the sign bylaw, which is completely now completely, by the way, in the original bylaw, there's all kinds of standards for, for, for signs, and that's now in its own separate sign bylaw. That, that kind of flashing is, is, I believe, not prohibited, not allowed under the sign bylaw. For, for non, you know, for non-safety situations, for like, somebody just wants to have lights blinking in their yard or on their business. I'm trying, I, I know that was in here someplace, and I'm trying to...
Well, in, in 108-5 in prohibitions, you have...
What's the section?
108-5. The use of searchlights, sky beams, or any outdoor luminaire that dynamically varies its output by...
Oh, there you go.
...fading, flashing, blinking, or rotating is prohibited, except as required by public safety personnel in temporary situations.
Okay.
And so that's what made me think of the flashing stop signs.
Right, but it does say any outdoor, it says, any use of searchlights, sky beams, or any outdoor luminaire that dynamically varies its output. It doesn't say it has to be strong, it does, I think that would cover it.
But the sign's not a light to begin with.
Well, flashing...
Well, it's, it's got flashing lights on it.
It's, it's, it's a sign with some flashing lights, it's not flashing lights.
I defer to Mr. Blansky.
That's how I would look at it. I mean, this, this bylaw, when it comes to public safety regulatory signs within a roadway, it's, it's not going to be applied.
Okay. Okay, that's all, I was just looking for any potential conflict.
But I appreciate your careful examination of these details.
One, one other thing was about the, I have two more things. One is, I noticed that they appealed, I mean, we, I, I know that we discussed this, that they appealed to the planning board. And it just struck me as, okay, well, in town, actually, all sort of zoning appeals go to the ZBA. So I was just wondering, like, and actually, this is more a question for Evan, is, is what are your thoughts about the fact that now we have an exception to that, and actually it's the planning board that takes an, and, and appeal as, as opposed to...
So first of all, the, the local appeals is, is an option, it's not a requirement. My conversations with council thought it was a good idea to provide a local appeals route.
Right.
And then I thought, I thought the planning board was most appropriate because planning board is currently doing lighting review. There's provisions within this general bylaw that reference the planning board to grant relief. So I just, I thought it made the most sense to give it, keep it, basically, keep it with the planning board, yeah.
All right, that makes sense. The, so the, the last has to do with enforcement and violation. And the, the clock of 14 days that starts with a violation. So what exactly triggers that? In other words, is it when there's a call, nuisance call, like you mentioned, the police squad, I didn't know that, but then if the zoning enforcement officer goes out, he takes a measurement, he determines that it's in violation?
I would submit it's the latter.
That it, that...
Up until that point...
And when he submits it, well, so that he then has to notify presumably the, the person who, who has the light. So when does the clock start on the 14 days in that scenario? When the, when it's, when the notice is given presumably? I mean, I would presume that would be it.
Do they write a lighting ticket or something?
Right, yeah.
And that would be...
You know, I, I think, it's interesting, I'm having this same, I, I've written a by, I've written a law, a bill, for the state legislature about outdoor lighting. And one of the things that, this actually falls under Senator Barrett, and he bristled at the notion that the, that the bill has too many specifics and that a lot of these kinds of details ought to be left to the Department of Public Utilities for promulgation. And I, since it's undefined here...
Okay.
Then I would suggest that maybe it would be the building commissioner's office to make that definition and, and that determination.
Right, or that we have some regulations associated with it. Okay, I think that would make sense.
Procedurally, under zoning, it's from the, the receipt of the violation notice.
Okay.
So I imagine the lighting officer will use a very similar standard that's currently done within the building department for regular enforcement.
Okay. So, right now, this bylaw takes effect the moment that it's adopted. I mean, that, that's what's written in it, right? So my question is, what preparation is needed for us to essentially, and that's what I really mean, is the zoning enforcement officer, to be ready to basically respond to these kinds of potential nuisance calls? And so, one question was training, you know, does he require some degree of training? Does he require some degree of equipment? So you have a, a meter there. I mean, he'll need the meter, a meter, he'll need to know how to use it, and presumably he'll need some sort of procedure to follow. You know, this is what I'm looking for, this is whatever, this is what results in a violation and so forth. And my guess is that, my question to you is, are there other communities that have implemented this already? And can you say what amount of time is needed in order to bring the zoning officer up to speed, or whoever it is that's implementing the enforcement?
There are not, and I don't know.
Okay. Then that's, that's sufficient. Because I, my, my getting to a point is, I assume that our current zoning enforcement officer is not currently trained or has a procedure in place or has the equipment to conduct this.
Not, not to fully comply.
Okay, so what I was going to suggest is that we have the bill's effective date be something later, potentially some number of months, so that once the bill's adopted, that gives us time for the zoning enforcement officer to get the equipment he needs, to get the training he needs, and to develop the procedures that he needs in order to enforce it.
I...
So, go ahead.
I kind of object. I mean, I feel like when the building inspector goes out to decide if someone's setbacks are appropriate, we don't tell them what tool to use and what training to measure the setback. I mean, I feel like we're in the weeds.
But, but they still have to, like, but he has that, like, he has what he needs. He's going to need to buy what he needs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that we need to specify in this bill what that is. What I'm saying is that, that's a reality of how it's going to be implemented.
But it seems pretty basic, so maybe we could do it 30 days.
It's basic to Kelly. It's not necessarily basic to the zoning enforcement officer.
This isn't rocket science.
The bylaw, the bylaw will need to go to the AG for a 90-day review.
Okay, well, that'd be perfect, so we'll have that opportunity to get up to speed.
As was discussed, it can be effective immediately, but if you're looking for, you know, some timeframe, upon receipt, the AG has 90 days to review and issue a decision.
Right.
That's all, all I'm, all I'm suggesting is that we make its effective date after its adoption date.
Okay, so maybe we could do that 30 days later, or once it's approved by the AG.
Yeah. The AG usually takes this time.
It, I, I'm sensitive to what you're suggesting, but it's really, if you think about what the ascertainment and enforcement is that exists now, it's totally vague and totally unenforceable. What I'm adding is a, is a layer of, of an actual requirement that's easily measured. And if the building commissioner doesn't feel that he or she can make that measurement, then the building commissioner is empowered to find a third party to do that. That could be me, with my lighting meter out. Or, in the original concept, the first discussion that Evan and I had about this, this notion of a lighting enforcement officer, this lighting professional that would be on call to the town, the cost of which would be borne by the, you know, petitioner or the whoever brings the plan, might be the kind of person who would be a shared resource for multiple communities who want to adopt this. And, and I suspect that such people exist, tree officers, or I'm, I'm not sure what other veterans, officers, I know you've had, that you share with other towns. And so, one of the things I was able to determine is there are at least, I haven't done an exhaustive search, but I know of at least two certified lighting professionals who would be willing to make these ascertiments on behalf of the town. Whether they would do that for free or per bono, or charge the petitioner, whatever, but it's not necessarily, if, if the building commissioner were in a position where he or she throws their hands up and say, I, I don't know how to do this, there is a way to get the measurement and get the ascertainment done. I don't, I really don't think it requires any treatment, any training other than to, to buy one of these and have them available to the town, wherever, whoever might be doing it. It really is a fairly simple measurement. It's a direct readout in foot candles, there's a specification that's foot candles, it would take a minute to determine whether there's compliance or not. I don't mean to minimize your concern, but it, it really is pretty straightforward, the training is pretty minimal.
Yeah, and again, I mean, I don't know if you're an engineer, I mean, I am, but, I mean, it's one thing to assume that something is easy to you, it's another thing to assume it's easy to somebody else, particularly when that person has a great deal of other things to do. But in any case, I think we understand, I think we all know where we are, so...
I, I mean, I'm a scientist, I, I deal with orders of magnitude, not decimal points, but, but, I mean, I, I just, just consider the many, many very detailed specifications for building code and such that the building commissioner has to deal with. This is pretty minor compared to those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Joel? Chris?
I just have one more thing. Under the demonstration of compliance, you specify compliance for multifamily and commercial and industrial, but not single family. We do still have some regulations that apply to single family in here, so would it make sense to have a section of demonstration of compliance specifically for single family?
I would say that we had that, and that was one of the things that worried people.
Okay.
And we still have, the ultimate fallback is the nuisance provision, which would trigger an ascertainment, at least in terms of at the property line. It wouldn't ask for an ascertainment of color temperature, or whether you've exceeded your lumen limit or anything like that. Those were the kinds of things that I was hearing would be crossing the line or, or making the, making the, meeting the standards of the bylaw a little bit too onerous and too complicated for the typical resident. So that's why they're gone.
But my concern, though, is that there are other things, like outdoor accent lighting, that still do apply to single family dwellings.
Yes.
That would not be triggered by the nuisance because...
There you go.
Let's continue the meeting.
Right. I mean, I, I was reluctant to remove all the guardrails for residential.
Yeah.
And I think the, the accent lighting requirements are pretty reasonable as, as they remain. There's certainly a compliance standard that goes with that. But on the other hand, it would be very easy to ascertain by a passing patrol car that a bunch of, of string lights were left on at 3:00 in the morning that shouldn't be.
Okay.
I, I don't, I, I apologize, I'm not trying to minimize.
No, I know, I just, I just want to make sure that there's some mechanism for what people should be doing if there is a, a complaint for single family homes.
You know, and I, I, I will use these, these string lights. Again, this is not something that we have much of an issue with here in this town, but I can tell you that there are other towns and places that they are more rampant. And that, you know, midnight to 6:00 curfew is a, I think most people at town meeting will find this to be a perfectly reasonable thing to ask a neighbor to turn them off at midnight. And it's easily confirmed one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, let's have a question. The preference is for...
Lumens and temperature.
Can you?
Only for single fam, only for single and two families.
4.4.1, but then, so do these, then, outdoor accent light?
That's applicable.
This is applicable, facade lighting is applicable.
Right.
Landscape lighting is applicable, string, string lights are applicable. It's not preference, those are bylaws.
Right.
They're applicable, but there's no standard for compliance. There's no, there's no, the bylaw does not codify a requirement to, for the lighting officer to prove compliance upon installation. So it's, it's, it's the lowest threshold you can possibly have in a town regulation. The currently, the current zoning bylaw requires compliance. You submit a permit to install lighting. The new bylaw does away with that for single and two-family. Basically says you can go to Home Depot Lowe's, you can buy whatever you want, you can install it, and the only time government gets involved is if we receive a complaint. Once we receive a complaint, then town hall is obligated to go out and resolve the complaint. But compliance upon installation is not required for single and two-family.
Nor is it required any longer for sale of the property, which was originally in the bylaw for single and two-family.
So it's, it's essentially, it's good until it's not.
Means it's effectively truthless.
Unless it's, unless it's a, a significant complaint.
Okay.
So it, it's actually reducing the current threshold for single family and two-family.
I had a couple of things. First of all, I, I like the idea of the town preference. I know others have an issue with it, but I feel like it confers some guidance without any regulation necessarily, and I think that's kind of moving gently in a direction, which is kind of what I thought we were looking for at the beginning.
And you know, it would be a switch that would be easy to flip five years from now.
Right, right.
If you, if you wanted to go in that direction, one way or the other.
I also like the revisiting, the idea of revisiting in five years, so I don't know how we could put that on a schedule somehow, but maybe you can hold us to that. And I also like the midnight to 6:00 AM specificity, as well as the 20 feet specificity. And I, and I, the whole time have, have thought that the idea of having 10 years to comply, to come into compliance, even for those for whom it's a requirement, is very generous and again, guiding them gently in a direction. So I just want to thank you for being receptive to our thoughts and for taking this on and doing all the hard work, and thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Should we take another vote?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I would move that we approve the...
Like a recommendation to the committee.
That we recommend this...
Revised?
Yeah, as revised.
And with the friendly amendment.
Now, do we also want to say something about whether we want to be, I mean, there's supporting it and there's serving as backers for it? If you will.
We could be co-sponsors, I think.
I would be glad to be co-sponsors.
That's what's in the warrant now.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm happy with that.
Okay, so then I will include that in the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm still on no.
Okay, let the record show that it's all in favor minus Anita, who is still a nay. We don't have anyone on Zoom, so we don't need.
Zoom's down, right at this point.
I'm going to assume that doesn't happen on a regular basis.
Never happened at a planning board meeting.
But you seem to know right, just what to do, I was impressed with that response.
Quick, I didn't know anything else to do. Ask Chris for help, but.
And I apologize, for the record, I'm Kelly Beatty from 117 Park Road, so thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right. Next up, we have Kate's Corner, discussion about the neighborhood and potential zoning changes. And we have a, I don't know if everyone had a chance to review the.
Sorry, I sent it to you guys late, totally forgot about it, the presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I think you did a good job. Don't know if people had a chance, so you want to give it to us real quick?
Yeah, do you got, Evan, do you want to?
I'm bringing it up right now.
Uh oh.
Different computer.
They've moved on, I presume. I think that's why the select board has you come into the, you have to get waved in by the.
Waiting room.
They may have two or three people working on it though.
Yeah.
Behind the scenes. At least one or two people.
You mean on, whatever that's called?
Zoom admin, so to speak, yeah.
What is that called?
Huh?
What was that called that they do?
The waiting room.
Waiting room.
Oh, no, no, no.
Zoom bombing.
Zoom.
Zoom bombing, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so just quickly to kind of, so Mike and I met over the weekend. Joel provided some feedback via email to us ahead of us meeting. So what I'd like to do for today is kind of finalize, kind of go through the zoning and kind of finalize what we think should go into this particular zone.
Mm-hmm.
We can do that. Then discuss if we can get, it'd be nice if we can also get applicability, whether this is applicable under COID or not, done today. Then I thought in our next meeting, because it's not just what we want there, but then you've got to look at the dimensional requirements on there. And that's a little bit more, I think, complex and might involve a little bit more time. And then, you know, obviously the next steps is, do we want to have to call a special town meeting? Are we going to do this for fall town meeting? And then come up with a warrant article to present. And then if we want future meetings to discuss other areas this may kind of work for.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So our short-term goal was obviously to address Kate's Corner. We started that back in January, then we heard about Lockheed Martin's expansion requirements, which we kind of opened up a can of worms, had we known about it, maybe we wouldn't have even brought this up back in January to begin with, that we were looking at this. We probably would have looked at a different area. So our short-term goals are, you know, Lockheed Martin's expansion, address the zoning conflict for Kate's Corner. Overall, we obviously want to preserve the neighborhood character. Our goal in this is to, whatever we do, it needs to preserve that character in that area and minimize negative impacts to the surrounding properties and infrastructure. Obviously, long-term goals is to reduce additional current zoning conflicts in Chelmsford, maybe provide transitional zone from RB to IA, which will help preserve neighborhood character. And then we can identify any other applicable areas in town. So just to take a step back, you know, we, the items we kind of thought about on this was first, you know, do we just change the parcel 116, 461 dash three and 116, 461, 463 dash one to IA? That was brought up. We decided back in February, this wasn't the desired approach. So we went back, this is when we, when the planning board kind of tasked me and Mike and Joel to kind of go back, kind of figure out a different way of doing this. So one of those ways was, do we modify one of the existing zones, CB, CA, or IA? Like, do we just take CB and change that? Like, is there something in CB that we don't like? One of the properties is already CB, and then do we rezone the rest of it CB? So we did talk about that, we looked at that. The problem with doing something like that, for example, in CB, I think motor vehicle repair is allowed currently. But we only, but, you know, we could say, okay, we don't want that, we can just change that, put a no for that. But then, what that does is causes a ripple effect in all the other areas we have CB, because they have currently motor vehicle repair shops there, right? So, and it's probably applicable for them. So we kind of looked around, is there, is there a current zoning that all we have to do is change something that would work? After we kind of vetted that out, you know, we kind of came to the conclusion that there really wasn't anything. We really needed to come up with a new zoning, which is what we did. We did create a new zoning, we actually took CB and kind of modified. We saw, found that that had the most desirable items versus IA, believe it or not, and modified that to, that would work. So that's, if you want to go to the next slide? Yeah, we can go one more. So that's what we did with, and this is where you see the, what I did is I took our, what's out in the zoning dimensional plans, and I put it into Excel, hid all the other zonings, and kind of just highlighted the RB, CA, CB, and IA, which is in Kate's Corner currently, minus the public. And then Mike and I just kind of went down.
Yeah.
One by one. And the items that are highlighted in yellow are the ones that we want to kind of talk about.
Mm-hmm.
We can talk about every single one if you want, but I think it's probably best use of our time just to kind of, because, you know, Mike and I were like, you know, boarding houses, owner occupied. You know, it's currently a yes in CA, in CB, a no in IA. It's Board of Appeals for RB. Do you want this to be a planning board or Board of Appeals? Do we want to, do you want this to be a no? Like, these are kind of things I like to get a, like us to talk about or think about. Then, accessory dwelling units, our zoning currently all has no, I assume those should all be yes. That's why that's highlighted.
What's that code right below that first one you were talking about? It's the boarding house, right? What's the, it's, the one below it is non-occupied, right?
Non-occupied.
Non-occupied, yeah.
Non-occupied, and you have to go to what, Board?
Board of Appeals.
Board of Appeals, okay.
If you're in residential. Then the other one is exempt uses. We had a yes, we weren't really sure what this meant, actually, Evan.
This is a, under the State Zoning Act, there is a specific state exemption for licensed family daycares. Family daycare is a daycare that is operated within a, typically within a single family, but it's capped at six or fewer children. So it's not a typical commercial setting, it's more of a residential setting.
But if they have more than one employee, I think their numbers can be expanded. Anyway.
I mean, it doesn't, doesn't come up very often.
That's a herring, sorry.
So do we want to make that? So it's something that not, that does not come up. And I'm just going to, I'm on my spreadsheet here, so I just want to update it live.
So can we go back to the intended use of this zone? So if we're looking at potentially using this for almost a buffer between industrial and residential, and if we're looking at potentially other, another use case, which is Kate's Corner, where it's not necessarily a buffer between industrial and residential, looking ahead at what you guys are proposing, it's more of a modified area surrounded by residential, then I would propose the boarding house and even the daycares would probably not be appropriate, because this would be as, potentially a zone right next to industrial. And so if we have, if we're not wanting residential right next to industrial, why would we want boarding houses, senior living?
Let me make an observation there. We have a lot of variety in what you will see. And Kate's Corner is a wonderful example of a space where, I suppose in theory, that could be a contractor yard over there, but it's not, and we all know it won't be. We need some degree of flexibility in here. One way to achieve that flexibility is by making a fair number of these options, be by special permit or ZBA potentially, but by creating a situation which they're going to be looked at in some detail, and they're not necessarily of right. That's another way to view it, and I think for the flexibility that you need at the edge, at the places where zones meet, that might be a good idea.
Especially if we're going to try and extrapolate it to other areas.
Yeah. Because I mean, what you're going to see in Kate's Corner is going to be very different than what you're going to see in other places.
No, I know, and I'm looking at other areas where we might have this, thinking ahead, potentially Riverneak and Turnpike.
Yep, Turnpike came up.
If the, if this is that buffer between IA and residential, I'm not sure I'd be comfortable putting a senior living facility, which is technically a residential set.
It's a residential use, yeah.
Yeah. If we're not willing to put single family, multifamily, two-family in there, then why would we put senior living and those types of residential uses in there?
Well, I mean, partly because they tend to be a larger use that has its own boundaries.
Look at the current IA zoning. So, or if we're talking about the one, the licensed family daycare facility, et cetera, planning board, special permit in IA.
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't, yeah, are you concerned about the, the fact that it's near industrial? That it's like a not appropriate use for industrial, or are you thinking it's not appropriate use for residential?
I'm thinking it, if we're saying no to multifamily, then we're saying already that this is not appropriate for residential.
But I think, but I think like a, like a daycare, I think senior living, right? They're more, like, I, I think they're different, like, than a multifamily or, I don't know, I think it's a nice transition, right?
I would not consider multifamily different from senior living. Because seniors are living in that building and it's multiple residences.
Okay, so you want no, or?
Yeah, I would say no for, for boarding house. Any, any of these that have a residential component, I would say no to. Because the potential of, it would be there of putting it next to industrial. And if we're saying no to multifamily.
Well, I.
But I mean, in the case of the licensed family daycare, it's a special permit by the planning board for CA, CB, and for IA.
Yeah, that, that one I feel less strongly about.
Okay.
It's the, any of the other residential uses like boarding house, senior living.
So you want, so you just want to, so go back up, Evan, some.
Because, because of the proximity to.
Yeah.
So, all right, so from five, basically five.
A5, A8.
And then.
D6.
So you want eight A, B, C and D, all?
Yes.
I mean, are we all in arremit here?
Because those would be all living facilities.
I, I, I maintain that we should leave them by permit. I don't think they should be by right. But in order to adjust to the situation as it appears in a particular area and a particular surrounding, I think allowing it by permit's reasonable enough.
So we had some concerns about the car wash on 110, right next to a senior facility.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Imagine that next to a warehouse. And imagine that there might be a senior living facility next to an area where there's a warehouse.
Yeah, and, and then we look at it and we say, you know, this is not appropriate, and we don't grant the permit.
But that's assuming the warehouse is there before the senior. If the senior living facility is there and a warehouse is coming in, we may not be able to deny that, because it's by right in IA.
No, yeah, we might worry about that.
So that's my point, is that it's fine if the special permit for senior living, but what if the senior living's already there, right next to an IA zone?
But it's not by right in IA.
Matter of fact, we have that done on 129.
If it doesn't fit the neighborhood, then we can deny it.
Anything over 20,000 square feet, a major business complex.
Yeah, so it's a major business complex, and we have the right under 195, whatever.
That hasn't worked yet.
Well, it hasn't worked, it only hasn't worked when it's, it's Dover.
You can't use 270 as a good example.
Right.
For not working. The major business complex is, is, it's a very protective bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I just have.
The town historically hasn't used it in that, in that manner. But, but for purposes of edge, edge projects, transition zones, major business complex actually would serve a really important role.
So then if we're willing to put assisted living in those facilities, we should have multifamily in there as well.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm hopeful that your, that your multifamily discussion comes up as part of COID.
Yeah.
I will say, I don't want to jump ahead, but the current strategy with COID, including multifamily, was based upon a notion that in lieu of cherry picking the best of perfect transition use, multifamily serves that use very, very well. It just needs to be designed appropriately, which is why the special permit was required. So like I said, I'm hopeful that even though Row 3 has an N, that we are going to revisit that as part of COID, which then speaks directly to your point. There's different, there's different classifications of residential. There's a light residential and multifamily being a heavy residential.
But if we're, if we're redesigning this to be a special zone, we may not need the overlay.
But this is why you handed out the zoning map. When you start looking at other areas of town to try to replicate what we're discussing tonight, which is really related to Kate's Corner, I think it becomes a very different exercise. And I'll just jump ahead.
Mm-hmm.
In, in this exercise, fast food restaurants with drive-throughs is contemplated as a, as a, as a permitted use.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm not sure you would introduce that along Turnpike Road.
Right.
All right, so I'm going to, let's.
So Kate's Corner in and of itself is, is unique within conflict areas.
All right, so we have a, I'm going to highlight Section 8.
And 3.
And line 3?
Yeah.
Leave it as a placeholder.
Okay, I've got them highlighted. Boarding house, owner occupied, I put it as an N. Do we want to highlight that, talk about it?
Well, I think it needs to follow the other residential uses.
Yeah, they're going to be probably a block.
Okay.
They're either going to be all yes or they're going to be all no, we have to decide.
Can you have a mixture, though? Can you have a mixture between?
Boarding house, multifamily?
Sure you can.
I mean, if the idea is.
But they're all very similar uses.
I know, but, but a boarding house is like a light residential, multifamily is heavy residential. So it depends on the strategy.
Yeah.
Which, which is likely dependent upon the, the specific geographic location.
But if we're using this as a transition.
Understood.
And an intermediate between those two, all of those would fit into that category.
What I'm saying is that someone could, someone, someone could say, or a neighbor could say, a boarding house proposed as a special permit is okay in Kate's Corner, but not multifamily. While Turnpike Road could say, in lieu of having an industrial development, I'd prefer to have multifamily. to have multifamily. But no one's going to build one boarding house on, on Turnpike. So it's, it's slightly nuanced, just based upon the, you know, the geographic locations.
All right. We're rolling on page 1. We've got more pages here. My timeline, my, my agenda timeline is going on, this is going to take longer. Okay, so exempt uses. I mean, I thought we were doing great. Me and Mike, we're agreeing, we're polar opposites, and we could agree.
Yeah.
Right? We were doing.
Yeah, we, we did fine. I mean, basically, we, we looked at a bunch of these, and a bunch we said yes, and a bunch we said no, and a bunch.
We didn't agree.
It was yes, or maybe permit, or no, or maybe permit.
Yeah.
And they kind of come up, they're all in yellow.
Was this specific to Kate's Corner?
Both, we looked at both, we did both.
Yeah, we were thinking, trying to think broadly here.
Yep. Okay, so exempt uses, I'm still licensed daycare, is that a PB then? Not a yes? Or no?
Which one?
Exempt uses, daycare. PB?
PB for me.
I would keep it consistent with the others.
All right. Can I not highlight that, then? I can take that off of the agreement. Okay. So now, we're on the next page. Institutional.
Can I, can we go back to the accessory dwelling units? Because I'm assuming that would be.
Oh, yes, across the board.
Why? All the way, right?
No, it would be dependent on what we do with the other residential uses, I think.
If single-family's not permitted, then ADUs are not permitted.
Okay.
Right.
Or not permitted by right.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
So then it would only apply for?
So that would stay a no, okay.
Okay. Back to institutional. So cemetery, I said yes, because everybody loves having a cemetery as a neighbor.
They never have loud parties.
Municipal garages, stor, storage repair shop. This is where we were no, or PB?
This is like the DPW facility?
Yeah, it's all, it's all municipal uses. Some of the garages, storage, repair shops.
And so, my, I think I was the no, you may have been the PB.
I might have been a PB, but I wasn't the flaming yes.
So, my thought process is like, when I think of storage, municipal garages, I think of like, a warehouse. So if I want this to be the transition, I probably don't want the warehouse in there. I would want that in the industrial. So that's where I was more of a no. I think you were PB on that.
No.
Yeah.
I would say no on that one.
Yeah, I think so, too.
No?
That's fair enough.
Okay.
You want to think of that, like, anyways, just thinking about. Hop on. I know we're thinking about more than just that area.
Helipad accessory to a hospital.
Can I ask you why that was even considered if you said no to a hospital?
If hospitals, no.
I think we were getting tired, because I think we were stuck on the helipad.
Yeah.
If hospitals know, then the helicopter accessory to hospitals should be no, right?
I think we need one to separate.
I mean, really, what, what are the, what are the applications in this town that would use a helipad? It'd be a hu, a hospital, or perhaps a few, I mean, I could almost see Lockheed having a helipad, but.
This is specific to, this is specific to an accessory to a hospital.
We don't have helipad for any, like, for IA, do we?
No.
No.
Do we have any in town?
We only have it for hospital, which we don't even have, do we even have hospital in town?
No.
No.
Not a full service hospital.
I'm surprised there isn't one up off of technology.
All right. Onto commercial. Non-exempt agricultural use. V was, what was V? Yeah, so V is provided that there are neither hogs nor fur-bearing animals. So I think this was a question that we were like, huh? Like, what are we even talking about here?
What exactly is non-exempt?
Right.
Ag.
Anything that doesn't meet the state exemption. But I think the simplest path is it's currently not allowed in any commercial zoning district. The point being that I think the town wants to encourage commercial uses in commercial zoning districts. Non-exempt ag is allowed in residential zoning districts.
Yeah. Quite right.
Yeah.
So the question is, do we want to permit it in a transition zone? And I think PB may be the answer.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, do we really care if somebody has a, you know, a stable and has people riding around on horses there?
Thinking about where we might use this zone, it might make sense.
It might, yeah, exactly.
Kate's Corner, you got that beautiful horse.
Kate's Corner, you've already got the horse.
All the horses right around the corner. But this wouldn't be applied on River, River Neck Road.
Why? Like, it might be, like, you've got that huge, like, if someone, I mean, tore down.
Okay.
All right, PB.
I could see places down, whether you could, but, I mean, if it's PB, we can make that judgment.
Are we still on non-exempt ag use?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do PB.
Non-exempt educational use.
Wait, what about, we know on exempt farm stand?
We had his yes, because across the board it had yes. It all are.
Okay, we're leaving that. Okay, fine. Non-exempt educational use.
Didn't know what that was.
What is that, Evan?
That would be a, could be a private college, something that doesn't qualify for the state Dover classification as an educational use. I mean, a pretty benign use.
Yeah.
I would do PB.
Well, cooking school?
Yeah, PB.
PB? Or yes?
I mean, someone could open up like a yoga studio, a yoga academy, they call it.
Oh, I'm in. Yoga?
Yeah, so I'm like.
Let's make that yes.
Yeah, let's do a yes.
Okay. Animal clinic or hospital?
PB.
This is an interesting one.
If you're going to allow the non-exempt ag, it could be a complimentary use.
Let's say PB. Isn't that what we said for non-exempt ag?
PB.
Yeah, PB.
Kennel?
Kennel, so this.
PB.
Kennel's a tough one.
Kennel, we run in, we ran into, we run into problems with this, especially on Turnpike.
They don't want it next to their house.
There isn't one right there now.
Right.
Is Kate's Corner a?
A kennel?
I think there is, yes.
Is there a kennel?
There's a kennel there.
You're small.
Yeah.
So where?
It's on the CA side of things. It's on Route 27.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
I remember permitting.
Before the mobile station?
Yes, right before the mobile station.
I would say PB.
All right. Funeral home?
Wait, what about nursing convalescent?
Oh, sorry.
The nursing one I would consider along with the residential, if we're doing yes or no, or PB on those.
So we'll put that in that clump together?
Yeah.
And then we still have to come back to about that clump?
Okay. Funeral home?
It's not a bad transitional use, I would say.
Well, it's, it's a funny one, because it'll tie up your traffic for half an hour, three times a week. You know, it's, it's an odd one. But it's generally, you know, there's plenty of decorum and.
It's usually nice.
Could be lower impact than many other uses that are.
Yeah, that's true.
I would say yes.
I'm sure they can work it out, so it's not around school times.
So maybe PB? Because I mean, you wouldn't want it smacked out between, I don't know. Trying to think where you wouldn't want it.
Well, I would say PB, because we've got, we've got a PB in IA. No in the residential, and CA, and yes in the CB, so it might be a planning board transition.
Yeah. Approach to take.
We said no to motel and hotel. Retail store and services.
What about Airbnb? I'm not Airbnb, like, a bed and breakfast.
We don't, currently don't list bed and breakfast. Maybe we should. Or something smaller than a hotel motel.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's sort of the closest thing I can think of there, is kind of like a boarding house. It's not the same, but it's.
Like a boarding house you live at?
Huh?
Or is a bed and breakfast you stay at, you visit?
Yeah, you visit, but you might visit for three weeks or a month. Boarding houses are often.
If you wanted to allow scalability, then allow it by special permit.
If we add something in here, we would have to.
Do for across the whole.
Consider across the board.
Yeah, it'd be a definition in the news table across, across the board.
Just to one problem at a time.
Yeah, let's hold on.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
This took a lot of coffee to come up with this, let me tell you.
Retail stores and services, not elsewhere set forth. So, we said less than 3,000 gross square feet was a yes. More than 3,000 gross square feet was a PB, and then more than 5,000 was no.
Right.
And more than 10,000 was no.
Who the hell know?
I don't know, I mean.
What do we have that's 3,000? I need a, I need a reference.
Well, the, the Skip Street Development on Chomsha Street is 10, with five tenants.
So that's including the 110 and the massage place?
Yeah.
And the bank? 10,000, huh?
The, the, the drive-throughs that have been contemplated as part of the, this proposed zoning article are 2,500.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the, the 9C of more than 5,000 but less than 10, again, if you're talking about transitional areas.
Maybe PB on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You might, I mean, that's, depending on what is on the industrial side of that, that could be a really handy.
I think Kate's Corner is village. But once you go to other parts of town, it's not necessarily village.
All right, let's say it's PB. And then no for more than 10?
Yeah.
Motor vehicle sales, no. Motor vehicle repair, no. Motor vehicle repair, no. Towing, no. Fueling, no.
Evan, does parking garage and structure include parking lots?
No.
Does it have more than one story?
I'm sorry?
So it has to have more than one story?
Yeah, let me read you the definition. Parking lots are by right. A parking, a parking lot is not a principal use. A parking garage or structure is a structure of any combination of materials assembled, constructed, erected, or maintained at a fixed location and placed permanently or temporarily in, on, or above the ground, serving as an accessory use to a commercial or industrial establishment, and is primarily used for the parking and storage of vehicles operated by the customers, visitors, and, and visitors of such, of such establishment. So it has to be an accessory use.
Lockheed is looking for parking.
So like, right, but this is what we would need for Lockheed. If they wanted to, if you want to rezone CB to this, we would need to make.
They only want a, a surface lot.
Is that right?
So this one, this would be applicable, wasn't that?
So a parking structure wouldn't apply, because it's not two stories? Okay.
But what if they needed, like, a two-story garage to?
Then this, then this, this would be applicable as an accessory.
Part of the conversation we had on this one was, well, okay, they could cover the whole thing with a parking lot, but suppose they had a one-story, it's half the size, would that be better or worse than covering the whole thing in pavement? And, you know, and it was, I don't think we really got an answer for that.
Which is why, like, we had either, so we have, I think what we, our thought was, we should allow it either through the planning board, but we noticed that it was BA on both sides, like, on IA and CB, so we didn't know whether or not.
I'd make a planning board.
I think the planning board, this should be a planning board thing.
Yep.
But I think it gives us that flexibility. I think this is a planning board thing.
But Evan, you just mentioned that the structure has to be an accessory use.
Correct.
We don't allow principal use parking garages?
No.
But even when they own all the lots, and doesn't that get, like, looked at as one property anyways?
Yes, yeah, so if, if there was any, if there was any business that had contiguous lots, or one large lot, they would be able to build a freestanding parking structure.
Okay.
We, the prior board did approve one when the credit union moved in on Bill Ricker Road, forgetting the name of the bank out there. To.
DCU?
A Turnpike.
DCU.
Yeah.
When they, about a year after they moved in, they came to the board for a parking garage, and it was approved.
Did they ever build it?
No.
I didn't think they did.
I don't know if they had a parking garage there. Never noticed it.
Right.
Um, should we, what about, I mean, I don't want to get out of our lane, but, like, should we change the parking garage structure in CB and IA to planning board?
Not this, not this scope.
Just stay on one task?
Taking notes of other ones we might want to.
Yeah.
That, that can be somebody else's project. Restaurant, we said yes. I don't, I forget what 8 is. 8 is, special permit from planning board shall be required if more than 10,000 square feet. That's what the eight dots, but we said yes.
If more than 10,000?
Drive-throughs, this is where we said no. Because I don't think in any transitional area, we want a drive-through. And I was thinking, like, River Neck, I was thinking Turnpike.
Did you skip over the medical?
No, we haven't gotten there.
Oh, we have, oh, sorry. I was looking at the bank drive-through.
So office is the other one. So this is transition. Do we want?
Office is pretty benign.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's benign, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see why that's a no.
Okay.
I'd say a yes.
But, but we're going to have to think about this in the context of dimensional requirements, because, yeah, office might be good, but a six-story office might not.
So planning board?
Yeah, so we're going to have to.
Well, I would, I would do it by, by right. If you think over 20, it would be major business complex.
Anyways.
Still going to trigger site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we have, this is where we hit the question marks for medical.
I think, it's like an office, basically, in my opinion.
So I had a question on what is the difference between medical office or center and medical clinic? Because this one is medical office center, and the other one is medical clinic.
So a medical clinic, as defined, refers specifically to a licensed medical facility. The reason that, that the town adopted this was specifically to regulate methadone clinics. So at the time, that was, that was a, a trend. The town wanted to have the ability to regulate clinics of that type. If you recall, a couple months ago, you did approve a medical clinic. It wasn't for methadone, but it was in the 129 area.
Okay, so we should do PB for medical clinic, and yes for medical office?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody agree with that? Okay.
Bank or agency, the drive-through?
Okay.
I would say yes for the bank and no for the drive-through.
So here is the whole, the reason why.
We had that conversation.
We had the conversation. We had the conversation, the reason why I was thinking no, I was like, who would, who goes to the bank anymore? Like, we're all old.
They build them.
Like, we're all old, he built, like, but, like, if you told, if you asked.
Chase is building banks everywhere.
I go to the bank.
You ask my kids, like, you've got Venmo, kids, they don't, like, I don't think.
My kids go to the bank.
We're old, right, so we grew up. We grew up, we know what a bank is, but you ask my kids.
We had coins and bills.
Right, like, like, I don't know.
As far as a use, again, it's.
With a Venmo, so you have to go to the bank when you're 16 and don't have a debit card or a bank card, so they still do use them, my kids go there all the time.
As far as uses with impacts, it's, it's pretty low both threshold.
That was the only reason why I was like, no.
Right, so no on the drive-through, yes on the bank.
Maybe make the drive-through a, a special permit planning board.
But the drive-through is associated with the bank.
Correct.
Yes.
I think you gotta have it.
Wait, without a drive-through, a special permit?
Nowadays.
Without a drive-through, it would be by right, with a special permit, with a, with a drive-through, it's a special permit. If you're looking for that, you know, that extra level of.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta give them an option.
Okay, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of banks coming up.
Yeah, I think it's safe enough.
I'm just saying.
Indoor commercial entertainment, what is that, like, the?
So, that's like your romper rooms, yeah. I'm surprised to see this as a no, I, I would view that as a pretty good transitional use.
Time to play.
It's a high-traffic generator, but.
Well.
Like altitude.
Big, big empty buildings, if you're trying to find uses for big empty buildings.
So, when I think of this, I think of warehousey, because they look like warehousey on.
Yeah, but, I mean, if people.
I think that's more appropriate for an IA, an IA place.
Time to play or the tiny mosaic.
Versus.
It's under a certain size.
Yeah.
For a transition zone.
Chuck E. Cheese.
Maybe put a footnote, a new footnote, if it's under 10 or under 20.
Can we do that for the specific one?
Sure, sure.
Like, it has to be under a certain size?
Yeah, well, I would, I would want to limit it somehow that way, if we were gonna have it.
So, let's say under 10. What's the footnote in CB? There's a footnote on the CB one.
Yeah, it's eight. What did you say that was, special permit for size?
Under 10,000. Yeah, perfect.
We could, we could adopt the same approach as CB.
More than 10,000, special permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd do the same thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Good point.
Outdoor, um, commercial recreation, I said yes, because I think that could be, like, a lot of greenery, like, you could have.
Yeah.
I think it'd be, like, a nice transition.
Tennis courts, perhaps.
Yeah.
Soccer, pickleball soccer.
Yeah, pickleball, right, so I just assumed that would be.
Club or lodge?
Those are your Elks Clubs, fraternal.
Yeah.
Those are good transitional uses as well.
Yeah, I think so too, I think yes.
Community-based, family-friendly.
Yeah. Riding academy?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna, you guys already talked about a riding facility.
Yeah, they have two of them down there, right?
So, we just put BA.
This, this is regulating riding academies specifically differently than other agricultural types of uses.
Non-exempt uses.
Yeah.
And we just put BA because that's what we had for CB. Wireless communications facility, what is that, and why is that?
That's your cell towers.
That a cell, is that a cell tower?
Yeah.
No.
Just make a board of appeals.
Huh?
Just make it board of appeals.
BA?
Well, they're, they're, they're essentially allowed by right now, under federal law.
Yeah, that's the point I was, I made over coffee.
Set on at least two.
Federal preemption.
So, BA?
For anywhere?
Yeah, leave a BA for now.
Okay. Fairs, convos, we said BA. Body art establishment. Like, they, to me, are small little shops, like, someone owns, like, a small little shop, right, and they want to do that, I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
I, I just don't see these being big, I'm a yes, but you guys want to?
Yeah, I would say a yes on those.
So, are we saying yes or PB?
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay. Like, I just don't know of any, like, large-scale chain, 10,000 square foot body art establishment that, like, is gonna come in anywhere.
No, it's the size of a barber shop.
Health club?
PB.
PB.
Yeah, do we, did we have a size limit on that one?
No, but you can.
Is there a way to limit the size, not, like, we, like, do we?
You can do that same one.
Do you want yes with?
Y, V11, VIII.
We've used 10,000 in a couple of places here.
Yep.
It's not an unreasonable, I mean, that's a pretty big.
Health club.
Health club.
Yeah, massage services, so, like, to me, like, every massage service I know is a spa.
Yeah.
Like, to me, this is a yes, but since we have BA across the board, I was like, BA? Like, I think it's silly for a spa, like, if you want to open up a spa, a spa.
And, and, yeah, we were, we were in agreement.
Backstory to why it's, uh, why it's even in there, why it's a special permit.
Is there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little outdated, but.
Yeah.
Can I just leave it a BA like the others, and then change it down the road if we ever want to?
But, you know.
Well, I think just because it says massage, too, like, it's like, um.
What is that, a tanning salon?
Nope.
Family, oh, sorry, family daycare home, not exempt.
Oh, sorry, I'm.
I skipped one, sorry, that's my fault. Do we want BA for that, across the board?
Stay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. What is a solar photovoltaic?
It's a tanning salon.
Is that a tanning salon?
That's a, that's a solar farm.
Yeah.
Solar fish.
It's a big tanning salon.
You might know the tan. We know where to look for you before you go on vacation.
I don't do that.
Okay, that's a yes. A dental care, I put as PB.
Medical marijuana, yeah.
Okay, let's go to the next slide, industrial. All right, earth removal, no. Light manufacturing, planning board.
How do we define light manufacturing?
It's anything that heavy is not. Literally, literally.
Yeah, it's pretty fuzzy.
Considering that in IA, we have not-heavy manufacturing is no.
Let me, let me read it to you.
Right, contractor's yard, no.
Oh, do we want to make this a yes? Yes, anything over 20,000, oh, sorry, yeah, special permits, just make this a yes.
What are we talking about, contractor's yard?
No, light manufacturing.
Light manufacturing?
Yeah.
The indoor manufacturing predominantly from previous prepared materials or finished products or parts, including processing, fabrication, assembly, treatment, packaging, and distribution.
Yeah.
Typically characterized by noise, uh, noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare, and vibration being contained within the building with no external effects detectable across property lines. Examples include food, textile, leather, wood, paper, chemical, plastic, metal products, and renewable or alternative energy. Excludes basic industrial processing of raw materials and any outdoor storage of materials.
So, if it's audible at the property line, it, it's not light?
It's essentially what you see down on 129.
But it's also what Lucky, uh, Lucky Martin is, is light.
It's usually, it looks like an office building, you don't really know what's going on.
Let's say yes.
Let's say yes, because, and it goes, anything over 20,000 has to come through us anyways.
Yeah.
Okay.
Granite, no.
So, the rest is no, which is across the board, then we have contractor's yard, this is where, like, CB was the problem, so I put no.
Yeah.
Right, no.
I would, I would suggest that for other areas in town, indoor contracting.
Yeah, PB.
Might be yes, okay. PB or yes?
PB.
Definitely PB.
PB.
Beehive thing is supposed to be, like?
Yes, that's right.
What'd you say, Marcy?
Isn't that, like, what that, what they came for 129, that beehive thing was supposed to be?
Oh, the beehive, yeah. That's a good point.
Yeah, that could, let's see if we'll be viewed that way.
Okay.
Transport terminal, like a bus stop, like a bus terminal?
That's, um, that's, it's something akin to what UPS does, but it's, it's along that scope and scale.
What's a wood operation?
Furniture?
Yeah, apparently. Not, nothing that you're gonna want in your neighborhood. Forest, woodlots, portable woodworking mills, and machinery located on a property for use in connection with the forest and woodlot operations of the owner.
So, lumberyard.
Well, not lumberyard, but it's like before, what happens before it gets to the lumberyard.
So, pedestrian and vehicular access to egress and by private way to and from uses permitted in an IA district.
Which is what they're gonna want.
I think that's what they want, but I don't know what it means.
Yeah, so because mu, many of our transition zones are but IA districts, you're gonna want to allow the opportunity for someone to pass, propose a vehicular access to and from and over.
So, do we want to say yes to this?
I would do, uh, planning board, special permit.
Yeah, we, we dealt with this, as I recall, up on Route 40.
Yep.
Does this also include the actual parking lot itself?
No, it's just, it's just, it's just the access.
Okay.
Remember, to build a parking lot, you need a principal use, and that requires site plan approval and/or use special permits.
Okay. Sale of goods?
Retail sales of goods, the majority of which are produced or undergo processing on the premises. What's an example of this?
Um, you could have a, um, I mean, bakery is a good example, which is number 14.
Microbrew?
You could, you could have a leather, a leather shop. A lo, a lot of it's going on in town, particularly like in mill areas, so like in up in, of, in North Chumacher, where there are a lot of transition zones, conflict areas. You'll see small, um, kind of like cottage industries, they're in a commercial setting, and they, they're doing fabrication, customization of something. Could be a metal shop, a leather shop, a wood shop. And providing them a retail opportunity is, it's good, you, you want to be able to do that.
Do you want PB, or do you want Y with the?
How about Y under 10,000?
Well, I would keep this PB, because there might be some.
Uses that.
Uses that might not be appropriate, if it's more of the.
Depending on what they're making?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Heavy production type of things versus.
All right.
Honey production or something like that. Microbreweries.
Making symbols.
I don't know if any of you remember when I proposed the, a, uh, microbrewery overlay district. Didn't go anywhere.
I think that's a great idea. I think Littleton did something like that.
Yeah.
Somebody did that recently, and they have a bunch of microbrewers poppin'.
Yeah.
Self-storage mini warehouse, I said no, again, thinking that we would save that for the IA district. Warehouse, again, I said no, thinking that that's more appropriate for IA.
Yeah. Research and development.
I would keep this PB.
PB?
I think in the IA, it's allowed by right, so, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of research and development that takes place in, whether it's Lockheed or other, other IA, that, we don't know what they do. I mean, unless there was specific research and development areas that you had concerns about, that you thought warranted coming to planning board. Currently, we don't differentiate between any type of research and development, so it's all treated the same. The research and development in and of itself, I don't think is of concern, it's usually, you know, how many trucks you're getting delivered, or, um, but even, even, even like Thermo Fisher up on Mill Road, that scope and scale, if it had external tank farms, maybe that's, you know, viewed differently.
Yeah, and that's kind of why I was thinking PB for this transitional area, because it depends.
If it's over 20,000.
You still may have a small facility that might create significant truck traffic, or, it depends on what the R&amp;D is.
Well, I mean, a question here, I mean, a lot, a lot of R&amp;D facilities are a bunch of offices, with a bunch of geeks, like me, like you, sitting around pushing, uh, pushing mice in front of a computer screen. And then they may have a small prototype, prototype shop associated. Now, whether both of those are part of the same use, or how you treat them, I don't know. I mean, the only thing that's ever gonna bother anything, anybody, and be any different from a, uh, just a, an office building, is gonna be the, uh, the model shop.
You're not gonna get many R&amp;D as principal use, they're probably gonna come in as light manufacturing with accessory. You know. Maybe cap the size, where you limit, you limit all impacts, but.
You wanna do that, Y with?
I don't, I don't think either option is gonna be.
I, I would keep it PB for the transitional space.
We can do that and see what comes before us, and if we need to change it, we can change it.
All right.
All right, so how is this different than the previous parking structure?
Parking garage structures. It's accessory to industrial use, so this would be a, I, like, I have a PB because it matches IA.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And I think this was the problem why they couldn't, Maxwell's, because this was a no, correct? That's why currently they can't do anything, because it's a no.
Well, remember, I mean, it, the parking structure garage is different, is different than an at-grade parking lot. So, this, this would allow, um, someone in Kate's Corner to build a parking structure. You are still, you are still not allowed to, to build a at-grade parking lot as a principal use. This is why, this is why the, um, the parking garage is, is only allowed as, as an accessory use. The town doesn't, didn't want parking lots and parking garages just popping up without there being a business associated with it.
Fair enough.
So, okay.
So, I'm a little confused, why can't, why then, could they not purchase Maxwell's currently and put a parking? Lot in there?
My, my understanding is that the uniqueness with that scenario is that it's not physically connected. It's separated physically by the Bruce Freeman rail trail. Now, if the town were to, meaning the planning board and the town, were to grant air rights, so to speak, to physically connect their main facility with, um, the adjacent lot, then there would be a physical connection, and that would likely then solve, um, that it, you know, it wasn't, um, physically separated. But because Maxwell's is.
It would make it an accessory use.
Because Maxwell's is physically separated.
Got it.
It, it's not, it's not, you can't treat it under zoning as part of the principal.
So, changing it to IA, I, so, my, the reason why I'm asking it is, did we address everything we needed to address, like, change here, that, because with my understanding, we needed to change the CB to IA? Because that was the first request that came in.
So, at, at a minimum, council suggested that the zoning district would need to be the same. That's likely, that's likely a minimum. I think you also need to take the extra step and decide, um, whether you want to allow parking lots as a principal use.
I was just gonna suggest that, adding a new line item for this zone, and say.
As a principal, as a principal use. Unless, 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 unless the end game for this particular location is gonna be a physical connection with a building on the, the current Maxwell's property.
Well, where, where is it?
If, if, if you open up, if you allow people, businesses, to build parking lots that don't have a building on them, a business, there's all kinds of what-if scenarios that, that can come of that. The town didn't want parking lots without a business or a building on it.
Which I think is a reasonable.
Sounds more like we're having an issue with the definition of accessory.
Right.
That we're saying it has to be contiguous. So, can't we just extend that a little bit and say it has to be within a certain distance?
You can, you certainly can.
That seems like a sensible way to handle it.
Certainly can.
So, we would add a line item here for parking lots.
You'd have to add a new. A new line item for parking lots. Yep.
That are accessory, but not.
And then define it.
Accessory use, and then redefine accessory use.
And define.
Yeah.
Provide a definition.
And we could just put no for the other zones for now.
Right.
Okay.
So, we would have to define the use, add a line to the table, put a yes or planning board for this zone, and no for all of the other zones.
Right, and let's just give, let's just give some careful thought as to what the proximity is to the principal.
So, I'm gonna put this accessory to industrial uses, right? This would be.
Well, your new line's gonna be, um, parking lot accessory, accessory to principal use, nothing to do with IA.
So, not a 17B, a whole new line?
Right, I would do a, uh, right, a whole new line.
Yeah. And then have something about proximity.
Okay.
Because this is gonna be accessory to the, uh, uses in this new district.
Right.
Okay, parking, I'm sorry, say that again, parking?
No, I think it's, it's a parking lot.
Parking lot, accessory use.
Accessory use.
And then we have to redefine accessory use to be a proximity instead of.
Just, 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 just define parking lot. As an accessory use further defined by proximity.
I see.
And, but this wouldn't be in the industrial section of the table, this would need to be its own.
It's only, as I understand it, it's only gonna be applied to this new zoning district to start out with.
Right, so, this table's sectioned into industrial, commercial, residential?
Well, yeah, because it's industrial, though.
Yeah, it would be.
You may have to list it under commercial and industrial.
Yeah, I would think we would.
Seems sensible.
And again, you may not want to allow it for. And again, you may not want to allow it for...
Commercial.
Other zones?
Yeah.
I think we shouldn't allow it for other zones until we have those further discussions down the road.
Right. You have to think about where it applies, where we would want it to apply.
Okay, so that's PB. All right, this is, I want to change this to...
Are we going to talk about COI tonight?
Can we read number of the other ones, or do I have to put this as 22?
I think for simplicity, maybe make it 22 for now.
And then 38 in commercial.
Oh, I can't have a two-paws.
You have to.
Do I?
Because it needs to also apply in the commercial grouping, too.
So, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I, I believe 103 Drum Hill is, is in the room. I don't know if you wanted to take a pause on this.
Yeah, maybe we take a pause on the COI part of it and go to 103. Are people okay with that?
Fine with me.
And then we can see how long that takes, and then, I don't know, maybe do it next time, or maybe not, if we can get to it tonight.
Well, we're largely through the list, aren't we?
Well, now, we have to look at the COI, is there anything, is there anything...
So, listen, can we just look at COI real quick? Because it's, I just, I think it's, just to determine whether or not COI, we should make it applicable. It's currently applicable in CA, CB, CC, CD, in IA zoning districts. And then the next slide, I put what the purpose and intent of COI is. I'm not going to read them all, but I think everybody can read them. Because I initially, when we were discussing it, you might go discuss it, and I was like, no.
I'm sorry, what?
I was a no, initially.
For it being applicable for COI?
Yeah.
Yeah. But then I kind of read, I went back and read the purposes and...
The COI applicability?
A purpose and intent.
Yeah.
And I was like, well, it fits this.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. So, what are we going to call it, by the way? Do we know that, or have we discussed that?
We can, we can discuss that later.
Yeah.
Because that'll take a half an hour, an hour.
Another couple of cups of coffee.
Because in that way, we can kind of wrap this up and we can move on.
Okay.
That might, unless you want to spend a lot of time on this.
Well, why don't we say, on the face of it, for the purpose of this conversation, let's make it applicable, the new zone applicable, unless other people have other ideas on that?
I'm still up in the air on it. Because I think if we can achieve the same things with the underlying zoning, we wouldn't need the overlay.
So, is the, so was the, is the concern that the COI introduces the opportunity for multifamily? Because setting that aside...
Setting that aside.
Setting that aside, the primary, the primary benefit of COI compared to the underlying zoning is that, by definition, it requires and provides the planning board the legal ability to require higher quality of architecture, landscaping, connectivity, pedestrian improvements. So, it introduces, it codify and formally introduces into the regulatory scheme all of the things that you want to accomplish.
But that's only if the project comes in under the overlay. If it comes in under the underlying zoning, all of that's out the window.
Right.
Correct.
And if all of the projects that we are seeking to put into these zones come in, can, can come in under, under the underlying zoning, and wouldn't need the overlay, the overlay is essentially superfluous, and to me, introduces a lot more confusion.
They're going to need the overlay for dimensional flexibility. Because unless, unless the strategy is that dimensionally, we are creating a very specific and prescriptive box, and we don't want anything more than that box. But remember, these, these transition zones, when you start looking at them, they're really difficult properties. So, likely going to need dimensional flexibility.
I would hold on this discussion until after we talk about some of the dimensional stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then see if, I mean, we can, we, because we can also say that the, the overlay doesn't, no longer needs to be applied in this section, in this area, but it still may apply in other places that we have this zoning.
Like, you're talking not in Kate's Corner, but in other, like, in other...
So, I would wait until we're done, the underlying zoning discussion, and then see if we still need that overlay in this area.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, just keep it as an option.
Okay, all right.
A placeholder for later.
We go to next meeting.
Okay. And then, I mean, I think that's a good, that's a lot of progress. Thank you for your hard work, you guys. Okay, next up, we have 103 Drum Hill Road. I mean, I guess the only thing I would say is, do we want to ask, do we want to have any, offer to anyone else if they want to say something about the Kate's Corner conversation to date, tonight, including Lockheed and the neighbors? Or do, I mean, these people have been sitting here all night.
I'd like to get a reaction.
Yeah. And again...
I thought we were going to circle back, back to Kate's Corner.
Okay, okay, fine.
If you want to do it, do, wrap it up.
Let's do 100, let's do 103 and get it out of the way.
Okay. All right, let's get 103 done, and then we'll circle back, sorry.
Sorry.
Good evening. Greg Drokes, Senior Vice President of Asset Management for Linear Retail Properties, owner of 103 Drum Hill Road, here tonight seeking a parking reduction approval to accommodate a change in use for the former Plaster Fun Time, changing to a Jersey Mikes. The change to the Jersey Mikes creates an overall parking deficit of 84 parking spaces, which is an increase of 20 parking spaces over the current deficit. Historically, the shopping center has operated with three restaurants. It used to have a Little Caesar's up until 2015, and at that time, the parking operated at a deficit of about 76 parking spaces. So, from Little Caesar's, Starbucks, Fo de Lot, to Starbucks, Fo de Lot, and Jersey Mikes would be an increase of eight parking spaces. We also believe that there's some mitigating factors to kind of the demand in our parking lot. Starbucks recently opened within the last three years, about three-tenths of a mile up the road, which has further reduced some of the demand on the Starbucks at our center. Additionally, H&R Block is open seasonally. They're only open during tax season, about four months out of the year. Otherwise, they are closed. And then, just in general, consumer demand patterns have changed in terms of occupancy of parking spaces with online ordering, grab-and-go, which has further mitigated the demand here. I'll just note, we've owned it for 15 years since 2010, and have not had an issue with parking occupancy, and no complaints from any of our tenants as well.
How many parking spots are there around the back?
13. Were striped in 2016.
And could there be more?
We don't believe so.
Those are for, like, employees?
Employees or customers who go to Fo de Lot. It's all lit, so people who utilize that end cap can utilize those parking spaces.
Are there parking spaces on the front left corner, around the side? I thought I saw a handicap space there.
If you go to the next page, I think we have the full parking. There you go. Oh, it's a little too light to be able to see.
Yeah, it looks like on the left, there's a single handicap space?
Yeah, there's handicap spaces here, this is all parking here, and then handicap here as well.
Okay.
This is the driveline here to go around back, and then there is parking back here as well.
So, on the side of the building, Evan, can you scroll down? There's only one handicap space there, or are there more regular spaces?
There, there are regular spaces there as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we hired an engineering firm back in 2016 to look at this. We were able to increase it from 99 parking spaces on site in 2015 to 112 parking spaces.
And you were doing that because you were having a problem, then?
No, just, I think to narrow the gap that we had at that time.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I've, I've been to UPS a number of times, and all but one time was I able to park just right in front of UPS.
Right.
Other than that, I was just like one-off, and there were always spots behind that, so I don't think parking's an issue.
There's no issue there that I've seen.
I agree. I've gone to Plaster Fun Time.
Yeah, I'm going to say I've done birthday parties at Plaster Fun Time.
Like, I parked right there.
And have a group of kids there, there's never been a parking issue.
Yeah, I agree.
One other question, are you, are you restriping those back ones?
Those are currently there. That was, this is the plan from 2016, just to show the ones that were added.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak about this matter?
Do we have to open it?
Okay.
No?
What?
Is it opened? Do we open it?
We opened it.
Okay, I guess I'll take a motion to...
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Mike Graysbeck, second by Anita, and I'll take a motion to vote on the...
Closing.
Proposal?
Closing.
Closing public hearing.
Closing public hearing. We got a vote on.
Oh, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay.
I would move we grant the relief request.
I second.
Okay, motion by Mike, second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Now, so, we're not going to circle back to the CEIOD, we're going to circle back to the public comment. So, if anyone here would like to speak about the, such as it is, our movement towards the, a new zoning district.
Good evening. Anne Sobuleski from Prince Lobel for Lockheed Martin. Thank you all very much for all of the time and energy you put into making these proposed changes. I did have one question, comment, suggestion, and that's with respect to the elimination of warehousing entirely, because as it's defined currently in the zoning bylaw, the definition of warehousing, making it prohibited across the board in this new zone, would effectively prevent somebody from warehousing something that they had manufactured on the property. But if you were to allow it as an accessory use to one of the allowed uses, then that would eliminate that potential conflict.
Do we currently do that?
Yeah. I think that warehouse...
Yeah, we currently, what's your principal use? We usually base that upon square footage. So, warehousing as an accessory use is, it's customary incidental.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We're calling warehousing, that's the use.
Primary use.
Primary use, okay.
Okay, anyone else?
My name's Ed Gray Turner Jr. I live at 8 Parkerville Road. I am currently zoned CB. My initial purchase of the property, back in 2007 from Agway, had a purchase and sales agreement that the CB would stay intact. It was an investment purchase, and I'm seeing at this point in time that that investment is going to be infringed upon. And the value of the property would be highly diminished, down to if it turned into a residential zone, and nothing to do with CB any longer.
Hold on.
What's your address?
What was your address?
8 Parkerville.
Should be the first one.
He's the one right there.
I'm, I'm the 100% CB property.
You're 100% CB.
I'm 100% CB. I'm not partially CB, like most of the other properties that have been heard from.
So, you're the one that...
So, the impact is, is greatly...
The little corner.
That one right there.
Can you point to your property on the map?
I try to.
Show them where Maxwell's is.
Yeah, show, Michael, show them where Maxwell's is.
That's his.
Carriage House Farming Gift. That's what the name of the business was back when I purchased the property.
So, that one, what's the number?
Carriage House Farming Gift was agricultural. And when the town initiated the Farm Act, it also created, in my opinion, protection of land use under the Farm Act. And taking CB away is actually infringing on the Farm Act, protection of the property and what it was used for. And that was the only use the property was for, basically was agricultural. I had a farm's, a vendor's seasonal vending license, and there was hardly any traffic, hardly any impact on the area, and it stayed aesthetically the way the community likes it. And I'd hate to see that go, because to me, that's an infringement not only on me and my investment initially, but it's also was an infringement on the purchase and sales agreement that was agreed upon during the sale. And it's an infringement on the Farm Act that's supposed to be protected in this town. Other than that, it also impacts any futures. I'm not going to live forever, and I already have health issues. That's why it's not active right now, is because of my personal health. But it's not to say that somebody else might want to continue that type of atmosphere and environment, and keep agricultural use on that land as a, as a pro-community happening. I'm talking to somebody else that might take over the property after I'm gone. That's one of my concerns. My other concern is that my property isn't even being recognized as being built in 1900. That goes back some, some time. And if you look at the Byham Village itself, most of the occupants in the village, what was their practices? What was their livelihood? That has a big bearing. When everyone keeps talking about keeping things in their prospective environments and protections, they're ignoring what Byham Village was. I just thought I'd like to bring you to that attention.
Can I ask you a question? So, you, 8 Parkerville, you're currently CB. You're concerned about going to residential. But would this new zone work for you, that we just talked about?
AI?
No, not IA.
It's a new zone.
This new zone that we're kind, it's a mix, it's a mix, this, it's a CB.
I guess I'm not understanding what that zone is actually saying. Maybe I'm hearing it wrong. I don't, could you explain?
So, we just went through all the uses, right? We went through, right?
I saw that.
And you saw CB was right next to it. So, we tried to, again, initially, my thought was to make it all CB, and take away the motor vehicle repair piece of it. That was where I thought was the issue.
And I could see why.
And the contractor's yard, right? Those are the two things we want to make it know. I think we went through it, and we can certainly post this next time for our agenda, so you can go, like, we'll have this in two weeks, and we can discuss it. Go look at all the, what we've put yes and no's for, for this new zoning. I put it as, I think I called it CB LT. I called it CB Lite, because it, it looked more like CB Lite.
Yeah.
Because there's not a lot of things that we changed.
Right, so look at it, and let me know if this works for you. This is kind of where we were thinking. We weren't thinking your property necessarily was going RB. It's just, please zone this whole area, this CB Lite.
Okay, okay.
So, please...
I didn't know, I didn't know that...
No, 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 no. That's, that's why we're here, we're talking, that's why this is public.
Right. We did talk about putting the residential back to RB.
Yeah, but, I mean, they're...
However, if it is, is all CB, then...
But if you look at Anita's slides later, it kind of reverses some of that.
Yeah, I actually said...
We didn't have a map to it, so...
Yeah, I said, rezone some mix of residential and CA, currently residential CB.
How does that work when you have a split zone on a property?
But his is mostly...
How does it work? Do they get taxed twice, separately, for the number of square footage?
No, the tax is based upon the usage. There are several zoning provisions that speak to split-zone lots, and the ability to expand the line or adjust the line with a special permit from the zoning board.
Agricultural uses are allowed, aren't they?
Yeah. Any agricultural, we're certainly...
Yeah, I think we said yes to that, right?
Yeah, we did say yes.
Is that what you want, is agricultural?
Agricultural, and yes, I do realize that, looking back at the history of my property, I, I also saw where, I guess at one time, it was an automotive repair. It was a, an aquarium or fish sales thing.
Was it bait place?
Hm?
Bait, for fish?
No, no, it was aquarium. They, they sold aquariums and fish, tropical fish and stuff like that out of there. In fact, in some of the portions of the foundation, where it... where it had cracked on the backside of the house towards the backyard, there's a, what do you call that gravel, that colored gravel they put in the bottom a few times? There's actually that coming out. And I'm like, what? So that only confirmed what the property was used of. Besides me also, when I was cultivating and when I first bought the property and finding the frame of an automobile buried in the ground. And I was like, are you kidding me? I have an automobile chassis in my backyard.
Just some additional information.
Not a fun find.
It's currently a single-family used property?
It's a currently, single-family zoned CB residence.
But I think a lot of the uses that we've included in the new special zone are covered. Are part of that.
Well, my point was is that any of the non-residential uses have been abandoned under zoning. So there's no grandfathering at this point. The lot is undersized, CB and RB, if we were to go there, both require a minimum 40,000 square feet. This is undersized. So it would be able to continue as a single family. If the board chose to advance this as the new CB Lite, in order for it to transition from a single family to any of the non-single-family uses in the new zoning district, would require significant zoning relief.
But even under current CB?
Even under current CB, it would need significant zoning relief.
Yeah, so it's not like we're changing it.
Understood.
Yeah. It's still the same.
Right, so his, the historical aspects are basically not applicable any longer.
I understand, but from his perspective, whether we did, whether it stays at CB or we do the CB Lite, it doesn't change.
No, you're right, it doesn't really change it.
It doesn't change it, like, again, take the time. We'll post this, it'll be out there, and look at this current CB and what we put in.
I just want to go back to the agricultural, just to be clear. So what we talked about was the non-exempt. But there are exempt agricultural uses by law.
The state exemption for Ag, and Mike, help me out here, is it has to be for commercial purposes. Commercial is defined as making a certain amount of revenue per year that is reportable. And I believe it's $1,500?
It varies between 1,000 and 2,000.
And it's, and it's up to, is it now three?
And it's per acre.
But exempt use has to have a minimum of three acres or two acres?
Uh, I don't necessarily-
Non-contiguous. Two acres of non-contiguous land, so it's a corporation, it's a legal entity.
Yeah, I remember the non-contiguous.
Yeah, so what Chumpstead has done is, Chumpstead has said via zoning, we're agricultural friendly, anywhere in town, well beyond the state exemption. So it is, it's in theory encouraging agriculture, whether it's gentleman's farm, small commercial farming, micro farming.
Right, and that's the thing I wanted you to hear, is that currently, your concerns about agricultural exist as right. So that doesn't change with anything that we're doing.
Because I also wanted to make sure that the public also, as well as the community, understood that at no time when I was running the business as it was at that time, even as a farm stand out front selling produce, did it cause any traffic problems at all for the community. And that most times, I was doing local delivery service to make sure that it wasn't going to infringe on anybody, you know, and the traffic in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, you dropped something right there.
No, that's, I don't know.
It's card it is.
You can leave it right there, though.
You can leave it on the floor.
Somebody else will drop it on the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to comment? Nobody on Zoom? We don't know?
Don't, don't ask.
We don't know.
Zoom's gone.
No Zoom Zoom.
Okay.
What, did we want to circle back to wrap up either tonight's meeting or what we want to do for the next meeting?
Sure.
We have the list up there.
All right, so.
Like, organize the list, post it so everyone can kind of look at it and review and see if they have any.
Yep, I will send it out. I'll update this presentation and send out the new list.
And then everyone needs to give some thought about the COI.
Yep.
And about the setbacks.
Yep, so I have this, in the presentation, I, do you have that up?
I have, I'm going to the first page, is that what you wanted? The, the schedule?
Go to the dimensional requirements.
Dimensional?
Yep. For next week, next meeting, 3/26. Because I'll update the slide, we can make a decision on COI.
While I'm doing this, to Chris's point, it may make sense just to table COI entirely. See what, see what we come up with.
Okay.
Yeah, that might make more sense.
Yeah.
Just, you know, just as an exercise.
Do we know what we're talking about?
Yeah, as an exercise.
Yep. So meeting 3/26, so these are the dimensional requirements that, not a lot, but that we have. And then these, these were the COI site and building requirements. If we decide to go through COI, this is where we would have to spend some time.
Yep.
And just for context, the COI table by right increased everything by 20%. I think it was 20%. And then the special permit increased it by another percentage. And again, that was per the strategy. It may turn out that, you know, you create customized dimension requirements for this new CB Lite district, but you want to provide some limited flexibility. So in that case, you know, the COI table, the COI bylaw could be applicable, but you're not using the exact dimensional requirements, which is fairly aggressive.
So we would not have something in here, is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is, you may want to provide flexibility, but not to the extent that the current COI provides it. You may want to scale it back to make it more village-like.
Yep.
So I'm not, I'm not advocating to use the exact COI. I'm advocating that I think it's worth using the strategy and the opportunity and flexibility that that concept provides. But it certainly warrants customizing any COI applicability as well.
Yep.
Rather than 20%, maybe it's only 5% or 7%.
So we didn't get, as you can see, there's a column and it's all blank, we didn't get this far.
Another, another round of coffee?
Another round of coffee.
All right.
Okay.
Can you send out the slides earlier?
Just for that, I'm sending it to everybody else but you. You will get it an hour before the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, we have liaison updates. Anyone have any liaison updates for us?
I didn't mention anything, I want to mention something about the vinyl square meeting. We had a previous to the last meeting, it was late the other night, so I didn't want to give you an update. But the last vinyl square meeting actually lasted like three hours. It was almost like a planning board meeting. But it was a good meeting. They talked a lot about the Route 3A and vinyl square is under the DOT's 25% design for redoing the entire intersection. So it's going to be taken over the next 10 years to complete the, I mean, the overall project is a window of like 10 years. But the planning is going to take a little bit of time, so they did, it was a really good update. There's a lot of neighborhood, as you can, would know that they're taking away parking, relocating some parking up that area, putting bike lanes in. So we had more attendance to any meeting than we've had in a long time in the past couple of months, so it's great. So there's a lot of activity. The vinyl square group is, it seems to be growing, but it was very good. And then, as you saw on, I think it was Conservation Commission, the-
Southwell.
On the lake.
Southwell?
No, Freeman Lake. They talked about, I think I learned a lot about aqua lakes and where the watershed comes from, where it's amazing, you know? So it was pretty cool, but that was about two hours of the meeting. But, so, it was really good. The group is changing a little bit. Joe's done a great job. Joe Tierney has the lead, I think he's stepping aside on the lead. So maybe after the election, one of your team members here, because I'll be stepping down, but I will be on the, staying on the vinyl square committee. It's a good committee, so if one of you guys want to think about being the liaison for the planning board, they've got a lot of good activity up there. They do handle a lot of things up on the north side of Chumpstead, so, and they won't have representation on this board now, so. So think about it, if, it's a good committee, and if you want to see me every quarter.
How often does it meet?
Believe it or not, I'd actually be kind of interested in some of that, because I, we farm up there.
That's right. So they meet quarterly, quarterly. I think they'll probably get to a more of a regular basis going forward if it gets a little bit organized. Virginia Timmons is also joining that committee. So she's been attending for all the meetings as the liaison from the select board. That, now that she's stepping off the board too, she's going to join that committee as well, so.
Be a veritable powerhouse up there.
Yeah, well, no, just that, they just want, they do want to just have some representation.
Yeah.
So that's what they're concerned about, that they're the afterthought, but but they're not going to succeed, no.
What are their needs?
No, it gets, they do not have regular basis, a regular meeting set, a cadence. They'll throw out, hey, what's the availability, the next one, depending on when everyone can do it. That's how they set up the meeting. So I think they're going to, with, excuse me, with Virginia being on the board now, I think they're going to set a little bit more cadence, a little bit more form. And just kind of structure it so they get the, more of the public knowledge out there, so. But it's starting to grow, and I think it's starting to expand outside of that. But there's a couple of, you know, obviously, the truck issues up there and all that, so there's a lot happening. So it's a good committee, that's why I just wanted to give a little two cents. They normally do not last three hours, maybe an hour and a half. So, but we could have used coffee that night, but it was good. So it's a good group, that's all I want to say to you guys, is when you guys are splitting up and making liaison assignments, come join us.
Well, like I said, I would have some interest. We'll see what happens when we get there.
Anyone else?
Yes. So last week, on March 6, I attended a zoning board of appeals meeting. And the meeting lasted nearly three hours, but about half the time was spent on discussing a request from Cobblestone 5. This is a five rental unit development on Maro's Ave, it's a 40B. And they were seeking an exemption to be able to allow to connect to the municipal sewer system. And after a lot of input from the proponents of the project, a lot of rebuttal input, ultimately, the board voted to allow them to connect, to grant them that exemption, because I think the concerns were, there's near, it's, this development is right near an act for protection district. The North Water District was very concerned about it. And also too is, you know, there was a lot of comments from the public. Ultimately, the board discussed that, at least in this, doing this, taking this route, they have some ability to negotiate and have some control over the project. Where if the board voted no, and the proponents of the project appealed to the state, it's very likely if the 40B will be approved, but the ZBA would lose any ability to, you know, manage it in some degree.
So how much more capacity do we have? How many, if more 40Bs come up, so it senses various.
It's certainly a concern, and I don't think it was a preference. The waiver request and the granting, if you, and John, I think you can attest to this, it was on council's advice within the world of 40B. Outside of 40B, yeah, I mean, the town through DPW made it clear, they didn't, they didn't recommend granting it. They articulated why. And to play this forward, I think, you know, you expressed an interest in having this as a discussion for planning board. Just had a meeting with DPW and the manager, and they indicated that the long-term wastewater options plan will be presented in May. And their suggestion was, after that is presented to the select board, it would make sense for them to come to the planning board and update and have a, have a discussion.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else?
I've got some updates from CONCOM. They approved Hildreth reluctantly, with a lot of, well, some significant special conditions. And a lot of them were very similar to the special conditions that we've seen on Brick Kiln and 270 Belrika, similar to the turtle nesting areas and things like that. They also had, they made it a point that they still have concerns about the ongoing discussion on the Health Department side regarding the Title V, which still needs to get approved. There's still a hydro geo study that's still open, as well as the contamination study that's still open. But they did end up passing that project.
Was it unanimous?
Yes, yep. Primarily because the project has addressed all of their concerns within their jurisdiction. The remaining concerns are outside of their jurisdiction with Board of Health. And so now it really, the only remaining hurdle that I am aware of is the Board of Health approvals, which are still outstanding.
And there's no anticipated timeline on our-
I haven't heard anything from council on the appeal. They have the file, they're doing a full review of the file, and whatever-
Council is.
Yep, and whatever filings with the court that are required, they're, they're doing on behalf of the board. We haven't received any, so I don't know if any have taken place yet.
Okay.
Sorry, can I ask, I was just asking, I was just talking to Joel. How does that, how does that affect the fact that we turned down that project? Well, I mean, they're still getting their approvals.
You need, you need all approvals to have a project, yep.
So they're appealing our rejection.
And they still need Board of Health approval, right?
Right.
So if they get Board of Health, and then they-
Denied.
And then-
Well, if they get Board of Health denied, then I think it's-
I just didn't know how that works.
Well, they're different jurisdictions, so it's essentially different areas, they need all three approvals.
Right. For that development.
For that development.
Right, but they could do others, something else.
Yeah.
I mean, ours is under 40A, CONCOM's is under Wet Nuts Protecting Act. The Board of Health is under-
They have their own-
For that project.
Title V.
Yeah, so they're independent. All those independent processes.
Thank you.
They also mentioned that they'll, they're going to review the lighting bylaw details and they'll likely write a letter of support between now and either a select board or town meeting from a Conservation Commission perspective. They're also looking to update their bylaws soon. In, they're looking, they're looking towards the gap analysis, like we are, to help with that. But they're also independent of that, looking at all of their other bylaws to strengthen them based on lessons learned from past projects. And then finally, their next meeting in two weeks will start at 6:30. And it'll start with the presentation of the watershed study results from the town related to all of the watersheds in their area, looking at where some of the problem areas are and things like that. So if you want to tune into that.
I went to the Board of Health, and there really wasn't much that had to do with our stuff. But there was some interesting, interesting things, tobacco violation, so forth, so on. And also, the Board of Health has banned the use of kratom or the sale of kratom in town.
Kratom?
Kratom.
What's that?
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows. But it's spelled K-R-A-T-O- But it's spelled K-R-A-T-O-M, so if you Google it, it's basically a plant that has, is, has been used for people recovering from opioid use, but it itself can also be addictive, also for people with chronic pain issues, it has helped, but there are also, and it's particularly because it's unregulated, that they were concerned about the fact that it in fact confirmed that, yes, it is in fact is being sold in Chelmsford, and because of that, Lowell banned it, we have now banned it, other towns are looking to ban it too, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, they had three different, three different meetings on it, three different hearings on it, first one, there's a ton of people there, and then it just slowly weaned down to the end to the people who were opposed to it, so, it's no surprise.
Opposed to the banning, or opposed to the...
Opposed to the use of kratom, the sale of kratom, yeah. Get it online, though.
I went to the Sun Village meeting last month, and Deidre shared the letter that was sent out to the planning board and select board, due to the plans not being followed through, where they were supposed to put a footbridge, and that has not been, and right now they're saying they don't plan on doing so, so I know that that is also going to town council, so.
And Jose, the...
Yeah, penciled in for your 26th agenda.
Yes.
With Kate's Corner.
And then, I didn't, I don't really have much more to say, of the, I brought up at the end of the last meeting when I was sick and it was late, that we did discuss at the Housing Advisory Board, NEMCOGS, putting together for all the sending towns, or whatever you want to call the towns that make up NEMCOG, as part of a regional housing plan that the state is looking for, they're trying to hone in with the communities on a town housing plan, so, they took input from a lot of different stakeholders, and they're putting together a plan, they presented a preliminary plan, I guess I could send that out to you guys if people are interested in seeing it, maybe that, we should do that, but basically I just said to Mike, who is our liaison to this project, that I thought, that in, the only way that we would be probably getting, from a structural standpoint with our infrastructure limitations, that the only way that this community would be likely to buy in, would be specifically looking towards the missing middle, and trying to see if there's areas that we would want to explore, targeted housing development, you know, more for, more for seniors, more like, more for starter homes, maybe something along the idea of River Meadow, but for, not for seniors, you know what I mean, like, kind of satellite-y housing, I don't know how to describe it, but, and he agreed, and I think everyone on the Housing Advisory Board agreed, would you, would you agree with that, and do you have other things?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, the housing production plan is a plan that is an outgrowth of 40Bs, communities that have a housing production plan are at a stronger position to deny 40Bs, so the real regulatory incentive is simply 40B. However, Chelmsford has historically also used it, more recently, to articulate its local housing needs and strategies to accommodate that, which speaks to the, the missing middle. Procedurally, the planning board and the select board both need to adopt it in order to be sent into the state to be certified, but it's akin to a master plan, it has lots of recommendations in there, some of which, you know, may be implemented and others may be considered, but no action taken.
Aspirational.
Yeah, but at some point during this process, I think it makes sense for, when there is a draft, obviously planning board will be invited to the process, but it may make sense to have it as a dedicated agenda item.
Definitely. I think he, I think he said that in his timeline, one of the things was that he would bring it to, I mean, obviously for us to adopt it and support it, we're going to have to hear it in a formal setting, so, I think that was on his rough timeline for the spring.
What do we have for meeting, like, for items on our next meeting?
All I have is Kate's Corner and 11 Cushing, the bridge.
So, 495, they're redoing the bridges on 495, and one of them is Gorm Street, on the 26th, March 26th, I live right off of 495, and like Hildreth, my street is extremely narrow, they're having a meeting, because they're going to start this, this is going to be a three-year project, and I have, I need to go to that, I'd like to go to that, it's at 6 o'clock.
It's on, it's on the same day as our meeting?
It's on the same day, so, we don't have a lot, can we start at 7 or 7:30? Just because I have to make sure that they can't park on my street, otherwise...
You're screwed.
Like trash won't get picked up, you know, the whole, all the problems about having a narrow street, I can't, like, this is a two-year project, so we need to kind of go with that.
Start at 7?
7:30?
7:30, do people object to 7:30?
Nope.
We have no problem with it, doesn't sound like we have much.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do 7:30.
It's a light meeting.
Yeah.
Before we move on from liaison updates, FINCOM, town meeting, warrant article reviews, do we know what the schedule is for that?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that, because I have to be there.
I think it starts tomorrow night, but usually they invite specific...
Yeah, hold on, let me check the agenda.
I believe Kelly's there tomorrow night for lighting, I don't know if they invited planning board, maybe not.
I have not heard anything.
Maybe a good thing.
Probably have it in my email, but, Tuesday would have been posted. Library, Neshoba, John...
Yeah, I'm just bringing up, it looks like, starting off, the library, Neshoba, finance department, cemetery, veterans, public access television, and zoning and bylaws, Kelly's outdoor lighting is near the tail end of the agenda, and that's, that's the only one I see on there, articles 2930 for outdoor lighting that pertains to...
When is their next meeting after the 13th?
It'll be the week after.
The 20th?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll...
So the week after?
Yeah.
You guys are doing it week by week?
Yeah, we'll be doing week by week.
Okay.
I think we skipped the first week because it was a ZBA, right?
Likely.
I think that's why they skipped.
That's why we skipped, yeah, we skipped the first Thursday of the month because of the ZBA.
Without select board, do we know when that's likely going to happen?
After the election.
Okay.
All right, now we have the grant.
I brought that up on the screen, Joel provided.
Yeah, I thought that was well stated.
Just for some additional context, the expression of interest closes on March 26th, as Joel indicated, it's a 500, you know, character, high level, and what the state does with that is they then provide some feedback as to whether it is a good fit, or are there other fits within the, their state grant program. This is obviously planning-related, though it's an eligible activity, the actual full submission application is much more involved, it requires a scope, a budget, articulating what are the, what are the, what are the expected outcomes, what are the strategic goals and objectives? So we can, and I don't have the deadline for that offhand, I think it's June, yeah, but my suggestion is, you know, maybe, maybe do one or two members to work offline, to then present something back to the board, if the interest is to have the full board involved, otherwise, you know, I can certainly, you know, be the primary author on the grant on behalf of the, the board and, you know, update the board accordingly.
Can you send along, like, kind of the...
A PDF of the...
Yeah, what it is.
Yep, that's a good idea, yep.
And, and then also how, yeah, what the deadline is, and how much money are we talking about?
Um, as I understand the scope, you want to review the existing use table and zoning map, and do modernization and update, I mean, with a consultant, you know, that's, that's at least 60, could be upwards of 100, depending upon the level of engagement with the board and the public, it's, that's a heavy lift, I mean, today, tonight's exercise kind of goes, you know, kind of tells you...
Well, I mean, we saw how long it took us tonight to get through.
Right, and then updating the zoning map, if it's comprehensive, to adjust all the areas, that's, that's not, you know, that's, that's an involved process as well, but it's certainly needed, you know, I, I think it's needed in the sense that the town hasn't modernized its use table or zoning bylaw, and it's kind of run its course to the point where the community, the board, the applicants are paralyzed, it doesn't reflect what the, what the town truly wants. The key to the grant application from the state's perspective is being able to clearly articulate a desired outcome to promote housing and economic development opportunities, and I think tonight's exercise shows that, you know, we're, we're aligned with that, and we just need to talk about...
I mean, we can also talk about...
Housing and what, to what extent housing is, is a, is a complementary component of that.
Right, and I mean...
Or also just the economic development helps us to develop the infrastructure that we need to support for that.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep. I think it's a compelling story, I think it'll be a competitive application, but yeah, I'll send out, I'll send out the PDF.
We, we discussed in the context of the MBTA, I mean, there was a number of areas that we kind of pointed to and said, this would be a good place for X or Y, several of which included housing, as well as, you know, other things, and...
Let me send out the PDF of the application, you can begin to think about it, you know, you can imagine, they do have questions that are ranked, if you, how you answer them, you get bonus points, and if you answer them, or if you have, I'll give you an example, if you, if you have restrictions on housing development, moratoriums, things of that nature, do you allow by right, is all your housing allowed by special permit, this year's application, as you indicated, may have questions about MBTA zoning and ADUs, so they, they use it to leverage communities that are, in their eyes, are doing the right thing or intend to do the right thing. So we'll have to see, I haven't looked at the application, I'm not sure if it's posted yet.
We need to get this in by the 20th, I think, it's soon.
The letter of interest is 26th.
Okay.
March?
Yes. Which, which is plenty of time, it's just, it's just exactly what Joel submitted here.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant the full application.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, just the letter of 10.
Yeah. Just to say that we need to submit something.
Yeah, the, the letter of interest is not a requirement, it's more, it's advised.
Solicit feedback, better position yourself for the proposal.
Okay.
All right, so 7:30 for the 26th.
Are you going to take the lead on submitting that?
I, I can, yeah, I mean, I'll work with you to refine it.
Sure.
I don't know if you had 500 words or what have you.
I think I was, I think I was within 500 characters.
Okay.
And then we have the minutes, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
I do have one correction.
I do too.
Which one?
The board will have Joel and Mike draft a zoning proposal, at least Anita should be on there.
Same correction.
Well, I was going to submit inputs and they were going to develop the, so I should, should say that.
Within, okay, so, have Anita and Mike with input from Joel and others as...
That's, gets good.
Yeah, the context of some of these board revisions, as you likely know, the town uses an AI system, which, which is really good, it has trouble occasionally picking up details of votes, depending on, you know, the pace that the meeting's taking place, and that usually Becky will rely on the motions, because in the past it's been really good, so, I think that's the theme, it's been related to motions, I think the last two or three meetings.
This one, this one, for these, it seemed like the motions and the votes were pretty accurate.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was just that one assignment of the zoning proposal.
And as I remember, as we were discussing it, there was some...
Back and forth.
Back and forth.
Exactly.
Anita wanted in on it, and Joel stepped back.
The human element confuses AI, so.
But in general, it's been really good.
I agree.
Chris thought that Anita didn't want to do it, she said, what are you talking about?
You picked the right people.
I thought it was perfect, you guys did a great job.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of February 26th, with that, with changes as noted.
Second?
Motion by Mike Raisbeck, second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
One more motion, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Anita, second by Mike Raisbeck, all in favor?
Aye.